... which your needs as well as the needs of the council in conducting its business are met. The staff members are here to be of assistance to you, so if you have a question, please approach them. If you wish to submit a public comment card and haven't done that, please complete the card and pass it to the end of the aisle where our city staff will be able to collect and bring forward those cards at the time of public comment. Agendas and written materials for tonight's materials for tonight's meeting are located on the tables outside the meeting room. As mentioned, the agenda tonight has been restructured from our normal practice, recognizing how important the SR 710 alternatives analysis is to each and every one of you, and we're going to turn to that. That's the subject that's before us at the moment. Let's conduct a roll call to confirm the presence of a quorum of the city council.
Councilmember Gordo.
Here.
Councilmember Holden.
Here.
Councilmember Madison.
Here.
Councilmember Masuda.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Tornick.
Here.
Vice Mayor McAston.
Mayor Bogart.
Present.
There is a quorum of the council present.
If we're going to have an overflow room, we need a working sound system. We need to hear what you're saying.
We can't hear a thing.
Is there overflow?
No, we can't hear you now.
Please. Fix it. We need water.
Obviously, it's our intention that everyone be accommodated with at least a full audio of the proceedings that are taking place at this time. I wanted to mention that validation for parking is also located outside of this room with staff assistance available to provide what you need. You know, the city council's goal tonight is threefold, as I would articulate it. The first is to be fully and accurately informed as to what the proposals are with respect to the 710 alternatives, and what the status of that effort is, and what the intention on the part of Metro is to move that forward. Secondly, to receive public comment. We've already started to receive public comment. Over the last four weeks, we've received comment during our public comment portion of the meeting, and more than 40 persons have expressed themselves. I might say all of those 40 have expressed themselves in opposition to the 710 tunnel, the 710 alternative, the ones that affect their neighborhood or all throughout the city. And the third is for the council to consider the situation, to deliberate, and to decide how to respond to the situation based on information that we have now. You see on the screen the recommendation that has come from the city council, which involves the elimination from a list of alternatives that Metro has currently under consideration, three which the staff is comfortable recommending be eliminated. The council will start with its consideration of that. No assurance that it will do exactly what the staff says, but I say in this case it's highly likely that the staff recommendation will be completed. The next thing I should do is something that we should never forget, and that is to pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. And may I call upon my colleague, Councilmember Jackie Robinson, to lead us in that important action.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In regard to the gathering of information for the council, so that we're starting to understand this in a way that we haven't before, I might mention that well over 200 messages have arrived on our computer screens during the last couple of weeks. Maybe almost as many as 300 messages have come in expressing the views of members of our community on this subject. The overview of what we intend to do tonight, first of all, we'll start with a brief statement from the director of the Pasadena Department of Transportation. His name is Frederick Doc. He'll briefly set the stage for where we find ourselves and what's going on in recent times in regard to this project. Secondly, we will turn to the Metro staff, which will make a presentation about the project on which they're working, on which we're interested. The city council at that point might have certain questions for clarifications, which will be allowed, and then we'll turn to public comment. I know I haven't seen the number of cards that have been submitted as of yet, but I know that that number will be large. Let me say that tonight the goal is for the council to deliberate and to adopt a position on the matter that is so critically important to everyone who is here. And in that regard, there will be a practical, not a legal limit, a practical limit on the number of comments that we can receive. We're going to keep listening as long as cards are there. I would only say that the longer we spend on that aspect of our evening, the less time the council will have to deliberate and decide. So we're hoping that there will be a good flow of public comment tonight, but not such a lengthy flow that we'll have difficulty conducting the business of the meeting as to the council's deliberation and decision. After public comment, the council will take up the discussion, consider these recommendations, and go from there. Let us start. I know everyone is anxious, and I appreciate your courtesy and your patience. Let's start with introduction of Fred Doc, Director of Transportation.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, City Manager. Briefly, we're here tonight because Metro is preparing an alternatives analysis of the 710 project for the gap closure between the I-10 and the I-210. That process will lead eventually to the preparation of a joint EIR/ EIS, and Metro staff and their consultants are present this evening to provide us an informational report on that subject, as the mayor mentioned. Briefly as background, just to start the show, the city did provide extensive comments about the SR 710 study last fall, when Caltrans held the scoping meetings and scoping hearings for the EIR/ EIS process. The quite voluminous comment was received from other entities as well as the City of Pasadena, and those are all on record with the Metro website, if you'd like to see those, or the city can provide the city's comments. Since then, and starting earlier this year, in 2012, City of Pasadena is one of 30 public agencies that are participating on a technical advisory committee assembled by Metro. In that role, staff, of which I'm the alternate and which Bauman Janka, our transportation administrator, is our primary member, review and comment on selected material developed by the consultant team. And to date, there have been six TAC meetings. The first was on January 18, 2012, and the sixth, the most recent, was on July 11, 2012. At TAC Meeting Four, which was held on April 5, Metro finally provided, or not finally, but initially provided some preliminary information about the range of alternatives that were actually under study on the project. There were over 40 alternatives that were identified at that point, grouped into modal alternative types, which they'll explain later, and essentially covering the gamut of the types of alternatives that had been asked for in the scoping process that involved alternate routes, alternate modes, traffic management, transportation management types of alternatives, and essentially covered the gamut that formed up those categories. At that point in time, this is early in April now, Metro then and the consultants indicated that they were focusing on 12 alternatives that they would receive more detailed study prior to the actual implementation, the initiation of the EIR or EIS process. At that point in time, staff began to communicate, both with council and with the community, about the extent of the alternatives and their potential to impact portions of Pasadena. What's important to realize is that in April at this point, those alternatives were just showing up as single lines on maps, and so we were trying to help provide some depth of understanding to what those lines on the map might mean, not knowing exactly what Metro consultants had in mind. To that end, we did provide information through a city manager's weekly newsletter that was distributed to council and as well as to the public. We worked with the Neighborhood Connections component of the Human Services Department to provide outreach and to facilitate Metro's outreach to the Pasadena Neighborhood Associations. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, the Neighborhood Connections newsletter is an electronic communication that goes out to all of the 90-something community organizations that are registered in the City of Pasadena. Late in April and early in May, staff and the mayor worked with Metro to add a public open house in Pasadena, which did occur on May 30, 2012, and at which Metro was able to provide information about the various alternatives and the ones that are receiving more detailed study. In July, at TAC Meeting Six, this is now early in July, the Metro consultant team provided more detail about the potential design of some of the 12 alternatives that are receiving that more detailed design activity. At that point, staff provided a more, was able to provide an update that brought out in more detail the information that had come forward, and Metro posted most of that information, if not all of it, on the website that is open for the project on Metro's main internet page. Subsequent to that, we've worked with council to schedule this informational meeting, and that was where we were working at this point, at the time that this particular opportunity to present to council came forward. With that, I'd like to stop the background discussion and introduce Metro's team so that they can move on with the presentation and get you to the information you'd like to be able to see. I'd like to start with introducing Michelle Smith, Metro's Highway Programs Project Manager, who will lead the presentation and will introduce the rest of the Metro team.
Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Bogart, City Council, very interested stakeholders. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come out tonight and give you an overview of what we've been doing on the SR 710 study. Tonight, I'm joined by my Metro colleagues from the Communication and Outreach Departments. Our partner, Ray Caltrans, is with me, as well as two representatives from the stellar technical firm that represents CH2M Hill, and you'll be hearing from one of those individuals tonight. Well, Fred, you did a pretty good job bringing everyone up to speed, but I just want to go back a moment and then spend some time talking about where we are, where we've been, what we've learned, what we heard during scoping. Spend an adequate amount of time talking about the alternative concepts that have been brought forth, and to talk about next steps, and then take questions at the end. We'd like to be able to go through the presentation, if that's possible, Mayor. With that said, here's what we do know. The existing no-bill condition of the SR 710 continues to contribute to growing congestion on nearby freeways and alternatives, and that's part of the reason why we're looking at this 710 study. Two-thirds of L.A. County voters approved Measure R funds to address congestion relief projects, including highway as well as transit, and $780 million was allocated to look at the SR 710. As Fred mentioned, we had robust scoping last year that was completed in April. Our board awarded two contracts, the environmental technical contract to CH2M Hill and an outreach contract to Consensus.
It's back here in the other room. The sound was sucked up.
Both are two, three-year contracts, and public participation is ongoing.
Let's pause just a second and see if we can't deal with this technical problem of audio in the other room.
Mayor, are we able to open these dividers so that we would have one room? We opened one. I wonder if we can't open all of them.
I'll double-check picture.
We have this filler. So they don't use it that often, or? Yeah, I know.
I'm informed that the delay associated with this technical problem of audio is going to take another several minutes, maybe three or four minutes, maybe five.
Ladies and gentlemen, we expect to hear momentarily that the audio in the other room has been corrected.
We intend to open additional wall space here so that persons can be at the edge of the group, the original group, and follow the proceedings.[1296.63][1296.63][applause] And at the moment, I want simply to test so that we can verify that the audio is working in the other room. So the purpose of my comments is to allow the voice to carry and to be verified that it's working in the other room. Would you please proceed? We think that we're in good shape now for accommodating the hearing on the part of everyone who is interested this evening, so please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Michelle Smith. I'm Metro's Project Manager for the SR 710 study. We started the first slide off by just giving the background, talking about things that we do know, and so we do know existing no-bill contributes to growing congestion. We do know the two-thirds of L.A. County voters approved Measure R funds to fund projects to relieve congestion. We do know that we had a robust scoping effort completed last April. We do know the board awarded the two three-year contracts, one to CH2M Hill for technical environmental work, and one to Consensus for the outreach effort. And we do know that we plan on doing public participation throughout the entire study We're in the AA phase of this three-year study. It's the first step leading to detailed environmental studies. During the AA, we collect data during scoping, and then that helps us to determine a range of alternatives that we want to study in depth. Part of what we do in the AA is to collect this type of data and conduct technical analysis. And then we advance a select number of alternatives to go to the next phase of the study, which is the actual environmental studies and documentation. I like this slide because it depicts the project development process. What I wanted to point out here is those blocks down at the bottom, the purple, indicate where we're legally responsible for doing technical soliciting public input. During scoping, after the document is draft, environmental document is released, normally we would have the public hearings, and then there's an opportunity before it's finalized. The Metro effort has not just the two or three indicated in green, but this slide is supposed to indicate that we are doing or soliciting input throughout the entire process. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that we are at the very beginning, and you'll see down at the bottom, there's a horizontal timeline that indicated that we started spring of last year. We intend on having some conclusions about the...
Audio across the hall. Don't hear a thing. Open the doors. Open the doors.
Testing one, two, three, four.
Testing. I was speaking over it. Okay.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Testing.
Test, 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 one, two, test, test, test.
Are we ready? Ms. Smith, please go ahead. Apologize for the delays.
The slide before you depicts a part of the project development process that outlines what we do, the steps that we take to get to the environmental report. I like this slide because it indicates, or it shows, a three-year process. It shows in the lilac blocks three stages in which we're legally bound or responsible for collecting public input, but with this contract will be, which the moss green indicates, we'll be interfacing with the public throughout the entire process. As you see here, we start with the scoping that started last year. We are at the alternative analysis phase, not even a third of the way through the three-year contract. And I like this slide because it depicts that it's a multi-year effort in that there's a lot of outreach... a lot of outreach throughout the entire process. You'll see that the draft environmental document will be released. We're targeting that for the winter of 2013, and then having an opportunity for a public hearing after that. And even prior to that, you'll see all the green little blocks, the little figures there indicating that there's public outreach. And then, there's an opportunity later on to also have public input. So, this is an indication of the environmental process and where we are, so you can see that we're at the very beginning, and there's plenty of opportunities for us to interface with the public. I also like this slide because it underscores the depth and the breadth of the analysis that is currently being conducted. This is a study area that's over 100 square miles, and it's a post-scoping study area because after getting post comments from scoping, we actually expanded the study area, which is a little unusual. Normally, during project scoping, you do get an indication of what should be studied, and whether or not things should be dismissed, and whether or not you should study things in-depth. So, you typically have your study area narrowed down, but for this particular effort, there was interest, and so, we actually expanded the study area to the part where the 210 and the 2 intersect. Our original study area was from the 210 to the 10, and from the 605 to the 2. So, again, this underscores the depth and breadth of our study effort. More than 30 jurisdictions are impacted by the study, and we seek input, and we're looking at various alternatives through the entire study area as we try to narrow down and redefine the study area. The next couple of slides, and I'll go through them quickly, are things that we heard during scoping, and as you might imagine, a lot of interest in the project, and for the most part, the feedback was to keep everything on the table, everything from the TSM-TDM low build to looking at surface and subsurface alignments, looking at freight management systems, looking at interior improvements. Before, we're thinking, we heard that often, and then also, we were reminded that some were interested in the no build.
Ladies and gentlemen, please let the presentation continue.
Sorry about that, Mayor. We were also asked to define the project need, continue public participation, and then look at a number of potential impacts as we start developing those alternatives, including the usual suspects, if I could say that, that we've identified here in addition to environmental justice issues. We were also asked to look at the local and regional planning efforts and make sure that we don't come up with any alternatives that conflict with that. Then, of course, there was interest in cost of the various alternatives. What we're studying right now are the... What we are studying are alternative concepts. I'll just talk about them briefly, and then I'll ask Lauren Blumberg from CH Toomahill to go into them a little bit more in-depth, and then I'll come back. Of course, any environmental study has to look at the no build. We have the... We're looking at TSM-TDM, transportation system management, and transportation demand management alternatives as a way to reinforce... I'm going to ask the technical team to elaborate on that, but I just want us to keep in mind the objectives that we set, and then he'll tell you about the evaluation criteria.
So, the question was the process of going from 42 to 12, right? It followed a similar process to what we're focused on now with the meeting the objectives and doing both the analysis focused on the traffic operations, the transit operations, and the environmental impacts. But it was at a higher level detail. Again, we mentioned, there are basically lines on the page at the 42, so the assessment of the alternatives with regard to some of the specific technical elements. For example, the right-of-way, we can't tell exactly the effect of the right-of-way, the air quality.
So, is this entirely staff and consultant that are doing this process?
We did draw on the expertise of our staff, and we got input from our technical advisory committees.
So, the comments that have been made to you, that Fred Doc referenced earlier from the city's transportation department... I apologize for the, and really, I apologize for all of you having to be subjected to this. We're doing the best we can. We will all try to be more articulate. The question is whether the input that you've received, the concerns that you've heard from Pasadena's transportation department, and whatever the outcome of tonight's hearing might be in terms of comments from the city of Pasadena, are those comments considered in your evaluation of which alternatives will move ahead to the final 12?
Yes, of course.
Of course. Okay. One other question I had, the answer to that was yes, of course.
Yes, of course.
The other specific question I had that I didn't understand, going back to Slide 28, which was the objectives of the study, if you could pull that up? Right. One of the specific concerns that has been raised in discussions in Pasadena has been the devotion to moving truck traffic from the port. Listen, we're going to get through this a lot quicker. I mean, I appreciate the applause, but really, it'll be better if you can not do that, because we've got to try and get through this tonight. The question is, I don't see that specifically reflected as one of the critical objectives that meet the project need. There's been a lot of speculation about that being one of the critical drivers in the completion of the desire to complete the 710. Is that just implied in some of these objectives, or is that one of the specific objectives that is contained in this study analysis?
When we defined the project need, we did not see the freight management system or the movement of goods as a need that we were trying to address, because our studies indicate that the truck traffic is not destined to this vicinity. For the most part, they are destined east to the Inland Empire and out of the state to Chicago and elsewhere. We do know that there are some local delivery trucks that have to make their way to the Costco's and the supermarkets.
Please, folks.
And so, that's the case. And so, we're planning to have informational sessions to share that information. We understand that that's a major concern here and a lot of misinformation, and we're hoping to share what we have so you can understand why we arrived at that as not being a factor in this particular study.
So, can I induce from that that as you move ahead through the consideration, since that's not designated as one of the critical points, and the position that you're taking is that much of the heavy truck traffic moves east at the 10, wants to go east, not north through Pasadena? Can I assume that some of the alternatives, as you move further ahead through the analysis, particularly the tunnel alternative along the Pasadena, the F7 alternative, can I assume that one of those alternatives at least will be a non-truck version of that alternative?
I think that we'll, at this stage, we probably can assume quite a bit right now until we can do more, we'll do more modeling. We can make the assumptions, but we have to back that up with modeling and other information.
So, do I understand from that answer that that might be a possible yes, that that might be one of the alternatives?
That I am saying yes to...
That there might be a non-truck alternative to that tunnel consideration and F7?
Councilmember, we're looking at multimodal alternative concepts, and what you have before you is what we're sharing with you. I don't believe that any of them are any truck alignments.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions? Ms. McAusten?
Thank you. I just have to ask this question. I don't have the slide number in front of me, but the slides that you put forward at the beginning, talking about your timeline and the public outreach method, and the green ones and the lavender ones. I don't understand how you can say you're doing public outreach when we have 500 or 600 people here, and they, a lot of them claim, this is the first, you know, this is the first they've ever heard of. And this, you know, looking at those slides, it seems you're spending a lot more time in working with the technical committee and the planning committees you're talking about, but no time really receiving input from the people that might be affected in these planning areas. So, how, you said you're going to be retooling your planning, your outreach efforts. I mean, can you really say, seriously, you're going to receive meaningful input from the public on these alternatives?
Yes, I can seriously say that, and I think that we had, we've done a very good outreach effort today. But there is definitely room for improvement, as I've been made aware of today. So, and here's...
Well, I just, I mean, we're not going to, obviously, we have more important, we have a lot of people to hear from this evening, but the fact that we had to request that you have a meeting in Pasadena, the one you had at the Rose Bowl, that a number of us went to, which was kind of laughable in terms of outreach, in my opinion, and that we had to have this meeting at all, tells me what you've been doing is not working, and I sincerely hope you'll pay attention to what you hear tonight and retool your outreach efforts.
We accept the criticism as it is.
Ms. Robinson, Jackie Robinson has a question.
Thank you. You mentioned that 780 million of the Measure R funds have been allocated to the SR-710 project. Of that, has the, regardless of what the outcome of the environmental study is, of that first allocation, is any of that towards the build, or is that coming out of Measure R, the second phase of Measure R, assuming it gets approved throughout the county again for the renewal of Measure R?
I don't understand the question.
The Measure R extension, is that what is going to go to actually build the, whatever iteration of the tunnel or service route, or whatever it's going to be?
I'm not able to say right now. We're looking at each alternative and looking at how fundable they are, and there are some like TSM-TDM that are low-cost alternatives that could be funded with the 780 million that we have right now. So, until we can decide on which alternative moves forward, then I wouldn't be able to say where that funding would come from. Some of the other alternatives, I know for sure the 780 million would not be enough, and so, we'd be looking for other potential fund sources or different funding scenarios to fund the more expensive alternatives. So, it would depend.
And you mentioned that Consensus Inc. received the outreach portion of the contract.
That is correct.
Can you, is Consensus here tonight with you?
I think there is one representative.
Can they explain? The question was, Consensus Inc. received the outreach portion of the Metro contract to conduct stakeholder outreach, and my question is, are they here? And if they are, or you can explain what type of outreach was conducted specifically in Pasadena? Were there mailings? I know there is a website, but of course, not everybody has everyday use of the internet. What was the exact outreach that was conducted in Pasadena?
Linda Bybee, I am the interim chief executive officer for communications for Metro. And the outreach components of the program were designed in a multifaceted way in order to, number one, accommodate, I think, as was mentioned earlier, the 100-square-mile study area that we had to start with in looking at the project, at the study. So, what we put together with that structure were opportunities for all communities convening. We had that at the beginning of the study, where we had two different locations. One was in East Los Angeles, and the other was in Highland Park. Subsequent to that, we had small meetings with what we called the community liaison councils. Initially, there were 13 formed in order to accommodate all of the communities in the study area. The purpose of the community liaison councils was to have an opportunity to check in with the communities throughout the study area, have them consult with us on optimum outreach in order to reach into the communities. And that was the primary purpose of the liaison councils. There were no technical presentations, so we would give a status update, and we're just on round two this week of the community liaison councils. The meetings of the open houses were where we focused bringing in the technical team so that we had broad participation by our technical experts with the outreach staffing there as well. And we wanted to provide an opportunity where there was close communication, not formalized presentations with, you know, one at the front of the room, and we had then no access except through microphones. We set up a gallery setting with very, very large presentation boards. Each of them were about 4 by 8 feet, and there were 36 of those boards in groupings of seven to circulate within the open house, and there was direct opportunity for members of the public to question the technical staff and move through...
I'm sorry, are you still referencing, excuse me, excuse me? I'm sorry, are you referencing in these roundtables you just discussed, are you still referencing the CLC councils?
No, I was moving on to the open houses.
Okay, can you backtrack to the CLC? Who are the members of the CLC, and how were they notified that the meetings were going on? Because I attended last week's Metro meeting at the Scottish Rite, just observing in the back, and one of the things that I heard from the audience at that time was that, you know, they signed up for the CLC and they never received notice that, you know, a meeting was going on. So, how were the members of the public that signed up to be members of the CLC notified of the meeting?
We actually have voluntary sign-ups for the CLC. It's not a formal body. We didn't list their names on the website. We did outreach significantly at each of the meetings and into the communities to find out who would like to participate. It's purely...
But even absence having their names public, how were they supposed to know when the meetings were being held?
Because we had email communication with them. We had a number of people sign up. Frankly, the participation in the CLC, the number of people who are participating in the liaison council, has been closely correlated with communities in different portions of the study area who, I think, believed had what they felt was a more of a vested interest in the alternatives being considered. So, in some cities, we've had very large participation.
Ladies and gentlemen, please allow the speaker to answer.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the end of what you just said?
I'm sorry.
Can you repeat the end of what you just said before the audience? Can you repeat the end of what you just said before the audience?
Yes, we've had, the participation has varied in number, and again, this was to provide status updates and also consult with the community stakeholders in preparation for the next milestone where technical presentations would be made and comments would be taken. We did take information out of the CLC gatherings and brought them back into the project team, so there has been continuing information and recording of that information through the project team.
Was there a Pasadena CLC, or was it part of, was Pasadena considered part of a regional group?
No, there was a Pasadena CLC, yes.
And how many times did they meet?
This, the meeting that took place last week was only the second meeting of the CLC. The CLC is not intended for any other purpose but to provide status updates, consult with members of the community who volunteered to be there, tell them to be prepared for the next milestone so that we could broadly outreach to those meetings, the open houses, and the special technical learning sessions, so we can bring in the technical team and share that information.
Well, you mentioned that you were gonna be retooling the CLCs, and respectfully, I'm just gonna ask that you retool them to include participation, because if I'm understanding you correctly, it seems like the CLCs were basically just presentations where you didn't necessarily expect for input or useful input to be made to the information that was being presented, and I think you can see from the response of the meeting last week that when people come to public meetings, they expect for at least a portion of the meeting to be allocated, you know, an opportunity for public input and for that to be documented somewhere, and I don't think I've heard you say that the input that was been given thus far, at least at the first meeting that you mentioned, has been documented anywhere.
Input from all of the meetings has been returned to the project team. There is no meeting where we have had a meeting with the public where we did not gather information and bring that information back to the project team for consideration.
Mr. Gordo, Victor Gordo.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like you to go back to Slide 28, if you will. I think that's the measure by which we should, or the background to review your project. I'm curious, how is it that you come up with the initial alternatives? And let me, and let me tell you why I ask that, because I'm looking at the objectives, and one of your objectives is to reduce congestion on local networks and the regional freeway network. And I gotta tell you, when the 210 was completed to the 215 going east, it did not, did not reduce congestion. It increased congestion tremendously. And anyone who's been in Pasadena for any amount of time knows that. It turned the 210 into a parking lot. And so, I'm curious, as you gave thought to potential projects, how that fact factored into your thinking? And then I look at another one of the objectives, which is assuring consistency with regional plans, and another one, minimize environmental and community impacts. And then I look at the alternatives, and I gotta tell you, once again, if someone were trying to fail more miserably, they couldn't have done it with these alternatives. And I gotta say, I recognize you're the messenger's, but because you're here to gather information and take it back, I think it's important that this council be direct with our comments, and I think it's important that the people who take the information back too understand our view very clearly. And as it relates to project, the project objectives of minimizing environmental and community impacts, this plan is just, how can we possibly say that we're minimizing community impacts when we know that this city has gone to great, great lengths to protect single-family neighborhoods, and we're going to increase? And some of your alternatives dismantles single-family residential neighborhoods. I mean, how can we say that we're going to minimize environmental and community impacts when one of your plans goes directly up Fair Oaks, and this community has gone to great lengths, made tremendous investments in Old Pasadena, and one of your alternatives goes right up that street? I just, I don't understand how, I mean, we all know that, my predecessor on the city council liked to say that traffic is like water, and if it comes to a stop on the freeway, like water, it will find a way off the freeway and onto our local streets. And so, I look at your objective of reducing congestion on local networks and regional freeway network, and I think of what's happened already on the 210. And so, if we add more capacity because we built the freeway through either, on any of your alternatives, how is it that we will in any way be reducing congestion on the local networks? When we know it's already at a standstill and we're bringing, we're directing more traffic to the 210 and the 134, that traffic is going to increase congestion, not just on those freeways, but on the surrounding local network streets. And that's going to impact not only the people in West Pasadena, but the people in Central Pasadena and the people in East Pasadena. And that, that I would suggest to you is unacceptable, and so I'm curious, how is it that you came up with these initial alternatives? And how, and I'd like to understand how these alternatives match up with your project objectives.
Well, I mentioned earlier that we've got a lot of comments doing scoping, and so from the scoping comments, we were asked to take a look at a number of routes. Some were specific, some were just, we'd like to be able to have more access to different places. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and we will weigh in what you're saying as we get more technical information, as we start crunching out the numbers. It's, it's difficult. One particular alternative may have, may minimize travel time and then have some negative environmental impacts. The same alternative may be consistent with the regional plans. So, we factor in a number of things, and the alternatives that move forward are the ones that have more of the positive benefits.
Well, if, yeah, I'm not sure that, I mean, the question is, how do you come up with the alternatives, the initial alternatives?
Can you be specific on which alternative you're talking about?
Well, let's, let's, let's look at H...
We have 12 alternative concepts that we're looking at right now with some variations.
Let's, let's look at H2, H6, and F5.
H2, H6, F5.
How is it, I'd like to understand, other than looking at a map and finding the most direct routes, I don't understand how these, these alternatives find their way into any plan when I'm looking at the objectives for the plan. I mean, they just don't match up to me.
I'm gonna ask for support from our CH, CH project manager. Maybe he can convey it in a better way that I have not yet.
Mr. Gordo, I'll just give you one quick technical example, maybe it will help. You mentioned the congestion on a local network. One of the analysis we did for both the existing conditions and the future no-bill was to look at the types of trips that are on the local streets, so it's kind of in the central area, Pasadena, South Pass, Alhambra, and about 20% of the trips on a local network right now do not have origins and destinations on a local network. So, they're going from somewhere else to somewhere else, and they're just basically passing through. I mean, you've heard that from people, not in your head, we've heard that from people. When we look at the future, that goes up to 25 to 30%. So, we're seeing a big increase in the number of trips that are on a local street network that are not going to and from Pasadena, South Pass, Alhambra, wherever they may be. So, in looking at the range of alternatives to your question, we want to look at things that would take those trips off of those local streets and onto the regional freeway network if they're making longer-distance trips. So, things like connections between major freeways, like the 10, the 210, the 134, et cetera, a lot of the freeway alternatives, they were focused on removing the trips from the local street system to the regional freeway system. As Michelle said, there's trade-offs on there. We're still in the process of evaluating them, but all the alternatives have some benefits for measures like that. That was the intent, trying to find that balance, that range of alternatives.
Mr. Masuda?
No, thank you very much, Mayor. Ms. Smith? I'd like to ask you a question on neighborhoods. I was a neighborhood president, and can we go back to your environmental slide, please, where it talks about studies? Environmental, the list of, right there. It talks about community and neighborhoods, and here's my question. How much weight are you gonna give with the consideration of neighborhoods? These are people from, from our district in West Pasadena, and they want an answer to that. How much weight will you give from their, from their input?
No, I, I'm only pausing because I don't know if he's looking for a number, or because we have clearly, I've clearly identified minimizing community and environmental impact as an objective, right along with minimizing travel time. So, I would say it would be equally weighted with some of the traffic factors, as well as is it fundable? So, and of course, this is hard to ignore.
The reason why I ask this is, it's not just West Pasadena. I represent East Pasadena, and we are one community, and so that's why it's very important. We are a city with many neighborhoods, that all the districts have wonderful neighborhoods, and I wouldn't want this to happen to mine. And my last question is, are you surprised with the amount of people that are here that are pretty much opposed to the, your alternatives? Are you surprised?
What surprises me is that we were not effective in conveying that we're looking at a number of alternatives, and that we were not able to convey that we had not determined or made a selection on any particular alternative. This is an effort, this, excuse me, this is an effort of excellent outreach, and we will be looking for these neighborhood groups to partner with us from this point forward so that we keep you abreast of what's going on.
Ladies and gentlemen, please allow the speaker to finish. I realize this is going on, there's a lot of interest, there's a lot of uncertainty about what's going on. I hope that some, or even much of what's going on is of interest to you, but let's allow each speaker to speak as they do. Ms. Smith?
So, frankly, I'm looking to partner with the associations that we did not include originally from this path forward.
Well, thank you. I really and truly hope you take all this information back to Metro and let them know how we feel. Thank you very much.
My question is about the no-build alternative. I want to know, what is the basis for the assumption that there is a need for a massive new facility in this region? What is the basis for that, and is it something we can touch and feel and read and understand?
The analysis of the need is really not focused on any particular alternative, so it's not a need for an alternative, it's a need to address congestion, it's a need to address operational deficiencies on the traffic, for traffic and also for transit. So, it's really in two parts. We looked at existing conditions, and we collected a huge amount of existing conditions data. So, I started with traffic volumes, level of service, we looked at, we looked at travel time. There have been several studies, as many of you probably know, that over the past few years that include traffic information. We also collected additional information, including from Caltrans system. So, that's for existing conditions, and I've shared a couple of those kind of soundbites with you today, and we've shared many more with the TAC. The second element to it is looking at the future traffic operations, and that's largely using the SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, regional model, which is a multi-county model. It looks at traffic in 2035, and that's continually updated. So, we looked at the performance, both in the existing conditions in the field, so from ground counts and so forth, and then compared the future model conditions to look at what's happening in 2035. And to a T, as I think everyone would expect, the operations in the future are gonna continue to degrade, those operational measures that we studied, and we looked at a wide range of them, are worse in 2035 than they are for existing conditions. So, that was, that's the primary basis for the traffic operations elements of the need. There's other elements related to the circulation, the connections, and access that are in there as well, but traffic operations are probably foremost.
In considering among the alternatives, no-build or the transportation management system alternatives and so on versus a freeway possibility, is the outcome of that analysis not going to depend on what amount of traffic and from how large a region you intend to serve? In other words, if there weren't trucks involved at Long Beach, would there not be a different outcome likely on the studies that you're doing now in this region for the so-called 710 alternative?
Yes, the outcome will vary depending on the alternative. That's why we use the model. I think Mr. Gordo mentioned the water flowing, that's a good analogy. As you make changes to the network, the traffic behavior will change. If you make a small change, it will probably have a relatively focused effect. That's both good and bad. If you have a lot of traffic operations issues, you only make a small change, you won't affect them very much. When you make a larger change, it affects a wider area, and it affects where traffic is going to and from, and it has benefits and impacts throughout. So, to analyze the traffic in LA County, which is no easy feat, we use the model to try to assess the benefits and the impacts of that, and that gives us a lot of information about not just the traffic operations in the immediate area if we're improving a road or building a new road, but how it flows out through the whole network.
One other question is in regard to the cost of the various alternatives. At what point in the process and to what depth and completeness will there be an evaluation of the cost of various alternatives that might be part of the study and up for consideration by the decision-makers and by the people who are going to be affected by those alternatives?
Typically, in the environmental document, cost is not a major driver, but as you can see in our objectives, we have a, we will be looking at how fundable the project is, and so we'll be looking at the rough border of magnitude. As we narrow down the alternatives, we can be more specific, but ideally, in the environmental stage... stage, the costs are not major drivers, but because we know there's an interest and we know that eventually we would not want to advance an alternative that cannot be funded, so we will have that type of information prepared for the public. And the further we get into the process, the more specific we can be about funding.
Thank you. Mr. Madison? Steve Madison?
Mr. Holden may have wanted to say something.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I wanted to go back to the schedule. You had mentioned the process of narrowing the alternatives. Can you put back the slide that showed how we were going to move through the process or how you're going to move through the process of narrowing this down?
Is this the one you were referring to? I'm starting to get dizzy.
Well, I guess what I was really getting at was the understanding of the timeframe that you're expecting to have the number narrowed down to some smaller number, five, I assumed, or I had heard. What is the timeframe for which you would narrow from 12 down to some smaller number of alternatives?
That would be our next steps when we talk about preparing and finalizing the alternatives report, and that would be this fall. We know that we don't want to go into the next phase where we conduct environmental studies with 12 alternatives. It's just not practical.
Right. And I guess what I'm getting at really is that there's a process that you have described that was, in your view, inclusive of community output and the like, and we've heard questions to that point. And I guess what my concern is, is that there are some alternatives that are listed before us tonight that really are simply dead on arrival. And it would seem to me, it would seem to me that for everyone's peace of mind, if there is an ability for this council to take a position on those, that Metro could respond in a sooner-than-later fashion, waiting to the fall to leave a community in stress and turmoil when you know that there's no chance of those alternatives ever seeing the light of day. And I'm not directing it to you, I'm really to the board of Metro and to those who will be making the decision, that they cut to the chase and that bring down the temperature. Because for all of us, and we're all one community here, to have to go through this kind of anxiety unnecessarily is cruel and unusual punishment. So I think it's, I guess what I'm really looking for someone here tonight who might be able to respond to the question that, and maybe there's no one here tonight who can do that, but to look to accelerate the narrowing process, and we're going to try to give you some guidance tonight. And in doing so, and I'm saying you, and I'm sorry, it's not directed at you, and so in doing so, we'd like to be able to know very quickly beyond the action that we take tonight. We'll send a letter, some correspondence in writing that will memorialize our position, and then I would expect that Metro would be able to respond and maybe enhance in this motion that, or in the direction that the council may move tonight, in that it looks to accelerate the timeframe for which you would review these options that really are problematic.
Well, oddly enough, we're already on a very accelerated calendar, if you can look at some of the milestones that we've already set. But to your point about expediting things, we will be, toward the end of the month, we have a technical advisory committee, and at that particular time, we will be beginning to discuss how some of the alternatives are performing based on the objectives and some of the criteria that we've established. And so we'll have an idea of some that are doing well and some that are not doing as well. But what concerns me, what concerns the team, what concerns Metro, is that we preserve the integrity of this environmental process and that we don't, as we go from community to community, talking and soliciting input, that we don't start withdrawing proposals from the table before we've completed our studies, before we've completed the engineering, because we're tasked with doing that. And so while we hear what you're saying, I think we're already on an accelerated calendar, and we'll know a little bit more toward the end of the month, and we'll be sharing that with the public at our next round of open houses. So we're already on fast track. We tend to be scheduled some open houses. We have open houses scheduled in October before the report is finalized. I was going to tell you to sign up and join the CLC, but I'm not feeling a lot of love for the CLC tonight, so we will be talking and working with your neighborhood associations to let you know. We'll be posting the information on our website. The general way that we get things out, I don't know that we'll be going door-to-door. That didn't seem to be effective this time because we missed all of you. So we'll be using the normal channels and anything else that you may suggest if you think that we are lacking in some areas.
You've indicated there would be some retooling of the outreach effort, and I hope that that would be taken into account, both as to timing and effectiveness.
Most certainly, Mayor.
Mr. Madison, I think you've been waiting. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gordon wanted to ask one follow-up, so I'll yield to him just briefly.
Thank you. One follow-up question, and I think Councilmember Robinson asked it, but I didn't quite get the answer. The extension, the proposed extension of Measure R, does that contemplate that those dollars, the extension dollars, would be used to complete whatever alternative is selected from your process?
The process started even before this extension, so I think they're not related at all.
So the extension of Measure R does not-
It has no impact on this study that we're currently doing?
No, I understand that, but let's assume for a moment that one of these alternatives is selected going forward by Metro, isn't contemplated that the extension dollars, Measure R dollars, would be used to build out that alternative?
It's hard to say.
And the reason I ask is, you know, the political leadership at Metro should understand very clearly that Measure R, or the support of the extension of Measure R in this community could very well depend on what Metro does with these alternatives, at least from my point of view.
Just as a point of clarification, there is no change in the expenditure plan for the Measure R extension. The Measure R extension will only accelerate a certain number of transit and highway projects. So there's no change. It is only for acceleration. So no change in the 787 that was committed to SR 710.
Okay. It's my impression, though, Ms. Bybee, that one of the projects called out in Measure R when it was approved by the voters in 2008 is the 710 tunnel. And it's funded at a level, I've understood that presented tonight, at $780 million. Are you saying that that money will or will not be used for the tunnel if the tunnel is the ultimate choice of the process that we're examining tonight?
I don't think we have, I don't think we can respond to that at this time because we're in an alternatives analysis process, and to presume the tunnel and cost of tunnel construction, I do know that one of the funding considerations was a public-private partnership opportunity, and that would be the basis potentially of a project moving forward. But at this time, of course, we don't have a defined alternative for the SR 710.
Mr. Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions and then a proposal that may bring some focus to the rest of this evening's discussion. And I too want to thank the Metro staff for being here. Yes, I want to thank the Metro staff for being here, and I also want to apologize for the technical difficulties that we've had tonight, although it's sort of a metaphor. You know, if the community can't trust us to run a meeting like this with effective, you know, audio visuals, how could they ever trust us to play with freeways right through the middle of historic neighborhoods? And I have to tell you, you know, here in Pasadena, we're a very progressive community. We're a very tolerant community, to a point. We're the community that, you know, scientists and engineers from Caltech and JPL are on Mars right now. And we find ourselves here talking about a freeway that was proposed in the middle of the last century and still arguing about that. And a freeway that almost however you cut it would have a horrific impact on our quality of life as a community. We're in a facility here tonight that is one of, I think at the time, it was one of only three convention centers in the country that was LEED gold-certified as a green building. And yet we're here tonight to talk about a project that would destroy the environment in our communities. So I do have a proposal, but before I do that, I want to just ask a couple of questions, and my colleagues, I think we're on the same topics, but I want to make sure I understand, if we go to that graphic with the upside-down pyramid, terms of the process. So I think where we are right now, aren't we, is between the middle brown segment that says initial set of alternatives, 12, and then that blue one below it, final set, correct?
Yeah, we're trying to get to, yes.
Okay, so what I'd like to know is, when is that decision going to be made, that is moving from the 12 to the final set?
As I mentioned earlier, we'll know more about which alternatives meet the project need based on the objectives that we have established. The full report we expect to have done by the fall in October.
So you're talking about a staff report addressing which final alternatives the staff recommends should be considered?
Well, okay. We have open houses in October, so I'm reminded. So as I mentioned earlier, we would like, our target for recommending final alternatives would be the fall of 2012. And you and I both know the fall of 2012 goes all the way into December, so.
Okay, well, I think we do need to know when that report's going to be issued, and we need to know when it's going to be acted on. I mean, there can't be any ambiguity about that. And we also need to know who are the decision-makers?
Yeah. Well, let's see.
No, that wasn't rhetorical. I mean, I'd like an answer to that question.
I'm going to do better. I'm going to take you to the slide that talks about. Oops. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'll have to tell the same participants the same thing I said the other night. There's no one particular name of who's making the final decision. As this slide indicates, Metro is administering a contract, so we've hired people with technical expertise and outreach expertise to make an independent objective assessment based on input from the public so that we can have some knowledge as to what alternatives should be advanced. And staff will be making a recommendation to the board based on the study results from our technical team. Caltrans, in turn, are the lead agencies-
No, no, let me just stop. So the Metro Board will pass on the staff recommendations? They'll approve, reject, or modify?
Hard to say whether or not the board will pass, but staff will make a recommendation, and the board will take that under consideration.
Okay. And obviously, we need to know when that will occur.
Well, that won't occur until three years from now, but we'll be updating the board periodically.
I'm sorry, what's going to happen three years from-
The question that is pending is, when will this process, of which you're a part, move from 12 to some lesser number? Five has been mentioned time and again. And in connection with that transition, which we understood is taking place this year, will there be a staff report? And to whom will that staff report be submitted? And who will act on it to validate a recommendation from the project team of moving from 12 alternatives to some lesser number? Is that the general area of the question statement?
Yes.
My plan is to update the board in October on where we are in the alternative analysis phase. That will be an information item to the board. There will be no action necessary for them to take.
Can you just tell us the date, time, and place of that meeting?
That will be in October, and Metro Board meetings are the fourth Thursday of each month.
At what time?
That will be in the morning. I'm sure it'll be on the website, and we'll make sure that you get, you and your community gets that information.
So the Metro Board has the authority to reject any further study or consideration of certain alternatives, correct?
I will be updating the board as an information item, and there won't be any action required. Is that clear? There won't be any action required on your part.
Well, I understand that, but will there come a time when the Metro Board has to take an action?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that would be when we had the final results of the study.
And at that time, the Metro Board will have the authority, to the extent there are routes that we reject, the Metro Board will have the authority to reject those from any further study or consideration.
The Metro Board will be acting on the final outcome of the study when the study's concluded in 2014. Prior to that, we'll be updating the board on what we see, what we hear, and at major milestones. That is the design of this SR 710.
I think Mr. Madison was exploring the same point that Mr. Holden asked, and that is-
Expediting.
How soon will there be official acknowledgement of any reduction, any reduction, from 12 to 11, from 12 to 10, in the total number of alternatives? Mr. Holden is asking that that action be taken ASAP and not in October. And I think Mr. Madison is simply trying to pin down what your position might be as to when that action might be taken. I think we're not talking 2014, but sometime this year.
As I mentioned earlier, at the end of this month, we'll have a better understanding of which alternatives, how well they perform when we match them up against the evaluation criteria and objectives that we've set for this particular project. That's at the end of this month. The full report, the conclusive report, we expect to have that this fall. I will be updating the board in October. So in October, I'll be able to say these alternatives are performing well, these are less performing, and I'll be continuing to do input, you know, soliciting public input.
But your graphic here in the second bullet point, it has a parenthetical that says, in essence, there will come a time when staff will recommend final alternative, I think it should be plural, alternatives, to Metro Board based on study results, right?
Yes.
When will that-
less performing, and I'll be continuing to do input, you know, soliciting public input, so.
But your, your graphic here, in the second bullet point, it has a parenthetical that says, in essence, there will come a time when staff will recommend final alternative, I think it should be plural, alternatives, to Metro Board based on study results, right?
Yes.
When will that be?
That is at the conclusion of the three-year study.
Ms. Smith?
Well, no, no. Okay, so am I, am I misreading the parenthetical that that will be, it should be singular? That will be the final alternative that should be pursued? Is that what you're telling us?
Are you telling, are you asking me whether or not there'll be one or two alternatives? I can't tell. We're in the AA phase. This is a three-year study. We're not even a third of the way there yet.
Okay.
So our board has asked us to periodically update them on the progress of the study.
Let's try it this way.
Okay. Yeah.
At some point, there will be an environmental impact report and an environmental impact statement, correct?
That is correct.
And when will, what's that timeframe?
Okay. Let's go back to... Yes, let's go to a slide, because my New Jersey accent, I guess, is confusing some of you, and I know we all know how to read in this room. We have, we will be circulating the draft environmental document.
Please.
The target date for circulating the draft environmental document and conducting public hearings is next year. Between now and then, we have to do engineering, we have to solicit public input, we have to conduct studies, and as, as much as we'd like to do this quickly, we want to be thorough, and we want to make sure that we do a good job, so.
Well, okay, I, I feel like the guy in that Paul Newman movie, you know, what we have here is a failure to communicate.
Yeah, I'm sorry you feel that way. Let's try it again.
Because I've been asking you about the process whereby the alternatives will be winnowed down, and some alternatives will be rejected before the environmental impact study. Are you with me so far?
Yes, I...
And you've been talking about, you've been talking about three years of the study, but the three years...
I've also talked about, at the end of the month, we'll know more about how the alternatives are performing, the 12 that we're looking at now.
Well, I already know how some of the alternatives are performing.
Well, we should have you on our team then.
So, again, the question I'm trying to get an answer to is, at what point in time will a decision be made to reject certain alternatives so that they're not part of your environmental impact report?
That would be in the, the full AA report.
That'll be this fall?
It's October.
Well, October, you said it's an information item only.
Right.
So presumably, it'll be...
You told us August 29th on Wednesday night, and then you changed it to July 11th.
Okay.
Excuse me, audience. Can we respect protocol, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna have to conduct, you know, one question and one answer at a time, if you please.
August 29th is the next TAC meeting, and at that TAC meeting, we'll be discussing how the alternatives perform based on the goals and objectives. If I conveyed anything different that other night, then that was my error. But that's always been the case.
Okay, um, let me ask you another question. Am I correct that since 2000 and 2001, comparing that time period to today, that there has been some change in intent or concept around truck traffic on this hypothetical 710 extension?
Since 2001?
Yes.
And you know, we've gone through a recession. I think there's been a lot of changes.
And in particular, could you just tell us with regard to truck traffic?
Okay, I'd have to ask one of the consultants to talk about that.
Very well.
Lauren, I'll go to first.
Thank you.
Let me make sure I understand the questions. You're talking about the focus of the analysis over the past 10 or 11 years?
Well, what I'm recalling is that 10 or 11 years ago, when we were having this discussion, I mean, we do this every 10 or 11 years, it seems, we were, we were under the impression that there would be limitations on truck traffic for the extension, and that was a pivotal piece of information for those who were in favor. Am I right?
I, I, I don't know. I wasn't around, but...
Okay. Well, today...
It could have been.
Today, are there any limitations on truck traffic on these alternatives that you're talking about?
Right now, we're analyzing the freeway alternatives as, I'll call them generic freeways, so they can, they can handle any kind of traffic. But that's the nature of the evaluation we're doing right now. We, we have to have a, some kind of limit on the number of alternatives we're evaluating. One of the reasons for, for screening down to a smaller number is so we can evaluate things like operational changes on the freeways, things like, things like restrictions for different types of vehicles, changes in access, interchange designs, those sort of things. Our freeway alternatives now are very simple. They're basically connections between A and B, and they're four lanes in each direction. That's really all there is.
And they would permit truck traffic?
At this level of analysis, they don't exclude it, yeah. But that's something we would look at in more detail.
As the regional transportation agency, would you agree that permitting truck traffic in an unlimited way is a very material factor in terms of the impact on the environment in which the freeway is sided?
Well, from, I can answer that from a technical perspective, which is that, yes, the impacts will be different depending on if there were something like truck restrictions. Generally, our, our truck volumes, as you get north of the 60, are lower than they are near the ports where they're very high. That's not to say there's no impact, so that's, that's a part of our detailed analysis. We probably want to look at the differences, say, with or without truck restrictions. That would be an important technical assessment, yes.
Just so we're clear, you're sort of using the passive voice there, but the, the impacts with truck traffic are worse environmentally on a community than if truck traffic is not permitted or if it's limited in some way, right?
The, sure, the impacts on a community where the trucks are going are greater with trucks than without. Of course, then there's somewhere else, too. But, yeah, they're different, that's for sure.
Okay. What, Mayor, what I thought I would do to maybe try to bring some focus to the discussion is propose a resolution right now that I would ask my colleagues to consider. And, and the starting point is the staff recommendation, which I'm grateful for. And I think I've, I've sort of broken that down even into a couple of, of components. In terms of the, the staff recommendation, as I understand it, the staff is recommending three alternatives be, that the city of Pasadena take a formal position of, of strong advocacy, that Metro suspend any analysis, consideration, study of three alternatives, that they essentially be rejected. And so, and I, personally, personally, I don't believe the staff recommendation goes far enough, and I'd like to explain that, but, but with, I want to make sure that we're all clear with regard to the three routes, the three alternatives that the staff is recommending we formally oppose. One of them is this highway, H6, that would run from, along Huntington Drive and Fair Oaks Avenue. Mr. Gordo talked about that. I couldn't agree more with his comments. And so, that alternative clearly should be rejected and should not be discussed, studied, or considered by you all anymore after tonight. And then, the other two that are part of the staff recommendation are, are alternatives H2 and alternative F5. And, I mean, these, these came like a nuclear bomb on the part of, of West Pasadena that I represent, west of the Arroyo Seco. And, I mean, like Lyndon Johnson used to say, you know, "That dog don't hunt." So, the, the idea that Metro, or Caltrans, or anyone would use our tax dollars to continue discussing these routes. And I'm talking, I'm talking about H2, which is the arterial highway along Avenue 64, or F5, which would be a tunnel through San Rafael to connect with, to the 134. Those are non-starters, and they should be suspended and rejected.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do appreciate your spontaneous expressions of support, but we should go on with the business, Steve.
Yes. And so, Mayor, as I've thought about the resolution, I mean, I've got some whereas language here in terms of what the process is and all, but I, I think we have to say a word about Measure A, which has been described by some as a potential constraint. I want to be really clear, as the staff report so finds, the, these three routes are, our opposition to them is in no way constrained by Measure A. Alternative F5, the tunnel through San Rafael, does not connect the 210 and the 10, which was a, an underpinning of Measure A. Alternative H2, the arterial, arterial road along Avenue 64, similarly, doesn't connect the 210 to the 10, so Measure A has no relevance to that. And, alternative H6, the highway along Huntington Drive, Fair Oaks, and Pasadena Avenue, it's not a, it's not a freeway extension at all, it's a new highway. And so there, again, as the staff has concluded, I believe with the counsel of the city attorney, Measure A presents no impediment to those. Now, we could stop there and, and consider that resolution, and, and I'm prepared to make that motion and then make a second motion, or I could make one sort of omnibus motion. And the, the latter would include alternative F7, the tunnel connecting the I-10 to the I-210. And, and I, it's my opinion that Measure A presents no impediment there either. A tunnel is different in kind from a freeway extension. And in 2001, when the voters of this city approved Measure A, the tunnel was not even a concept that was on the table. And just in my mind, I think it's not even a close question, that it's, it's completely different in kind, and that we should make a strong statement rejecting that alternative So perhaps I'll stop there and, and hear the comments of my colleagues, and I'm prepared to make that, either one or two formal motions, and then that could bring some focus to the, to the comments and the discussion.
I would say the motion is welcome at this time, and a second would be welcome as well, but the council is not in a position, because of our commitment to receive public comment, to proceed with any serious deliberation of that this evening, or a vote on it until after public comment has been satisfied. That was the point I made before, that the hope is that for persons who are finding themselves inclined to say something that's been said time and time again on this issue, perhaps they would step back from the statement that they might otherwise have planned, so that before long, this council might turn to the motion that is put before us, the motion or the motions, and then we can hope for a, an outcome that is of interest to lots of people here tonight. Are there other comments from members of the council?
Um, no comment on Mr. Madison's motion yet, but I want to try a stab at what I think Councilmember Madison was trying to ask Ms. Smith.
Jackie?
I'm sorry. No comment on Mr. Madison's motion at this time, but I want to try another stab at the question that I think he was trying to ask Ms. Smith. And if I was hearing you correctly, in October of 2012, when you take the information item to the Metro Board, of the staff alternatives that are, will be contemplated at that time, although it's just an information item to the board, are they able to direct you to take any or all parts of your recommendation forward?
I imagine that, I imagine...
Even though it is an, you have stated that it's an information item.
I imagine the board can direct staff to do as the board pleases.
Okay, thank you. That, that answers the question. Thank you.
Ms. McAllister?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to follow up on this because we still haven't gotten a straight answer on this. When you take the, when you take these alternatives to the Metro Board as an information item, will that be a public meeting?
The board meetings are public.
Okay, so the public is welcome to attend that meeting?
By definition, public meetings are, public's welcome.
Right. So, so when will that meeting be?
I will be updating the board in October on the status of the alternative analysis report, and that will be the fourth Thursday in October, in the morning.
Okay, so on the fourth...
It'll probably go to committee first. Committee meets the week before.
Okay, but on the, on the fourth Thursday of October, that's when you will present to the Metro Board as an information item, your feedback and recommendations on whittling the alternatives down?
I will be reporting back to the board on the status of the alternative concepts, how well the, how the alternatives are performing against the objectives that we set, as well as the purpose and need. And my plan was to provide an information item, a receive-and-file. That, that is the current plan right now.
Right, so if the Metro Board wanted to take any action at that item, the, is the president of the, what do they call them? The director of the Metro Board? The president, Mr. Antonovich, he has the ability to set the agenda, is that correct?
The chair.
Let me, let me talk to the process here a little bit, if I can. This report will probably come forward first at the committee meeting, planning and programming, which is the Wednesday before the fourth Thursday. And, and just for the record, we have the open houses scheduled following the committee meeting, that would be the planning and programming. So that is, the first one is October 18, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the El Serrano Senior Citizen Center in Los Angeles. The second one is Saturday, October 2, 10:00 a.m. to noon at Maranatha High School in Pasadena. So those two open houses...
At Maranatha? At Maranatha High School?
Yes, at Maranatha.
Okay, and so, how do you intend, there's a lot of interest in this meeting where Metro will be presented with this information. How do you intend to get this information out?
Well, we will be doing a significant information outreach, and in between now and October, it is our intention to meet with small community groups, neighborhood councils, and so forth, so that we are conducting continued outreach. But there will be a broad outreach and advertising regarding these two meetings. And these two meetings will follow the planning and programming meeting, then we will have the, the open houses for the public, and the board meeting is the following Thursday, but...
Okay, fine. So the information will go out in the mail, in the email, to the neighborhoods, to the city, and we will probably have a response. In the end of the day, we're probably going to be the ones getting this information out, Mayor, because I don't think their communication's gonna cut it in Pasadena.
We, we welcome your support in getting the word out through any of the means you have here in the city as well. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden, are you waiting to speak, sir?
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. On the, the Metro Board's next meeting is on the fourth Thursday, so the 24th of August is the next, when is the next board meeting?
September.
So you have no... So you have no meetings until September?
No, no meeting this month. There's no, the Board doesn't meet this month.
Oh, it does not? Okay, so the next meeting?
Is in September.
September, the fourth Thursday.
That is correct.
So if the, the council were to take action tonight on, on some directive that they would like to present to the Metro Board directly, then either the council or representative of the council can show up at the next Metro Board meeting and present its positions on what it thinks needs to be taken out of further study?
Mayor, you're welcome to do that.
Okay, thank you.
A motion has been made. It's possible two motions, and I guess the question is, is there a second, and does the person who wishes to make a second want to specify whether the second relates to the motion in its totality or to something less than all four alternatives?
Mayor, I would, I'm comfortable supporting that part of Mr. Madison's motion that addresses all of the other options, for lack of a better way to describe it. I, I am a little concerned, and I would, so if there's a bifurcation, then that's okay, but I'd like to get some clearance on the, the legal question relative to F7. Because I'm not sure, given the, the fact that Measure A does exist, what does that mean in terms of, because I, you know, just in my own mind, I can't see how a surface route is going to go forward either. And so de facto, we have essentially eliminated everything. And so there's a, a concern as to what that represents from a legal standpoint. I mean, we got clearance on how to go beyond, or extend beyond Measure A. So I'm prepared to support that part of Mr. Madison's motion that eliminates, it's rather consistent with the staff's recommendation. But in the interim, I'd like to get some direction on the other part that he was proposing as well.
I understand that a second has been offered, Steve, with respect to a motion that would cover the first three alternatives, not including F7. If you accept that as a second for one motion to be placed before this council, then we would consider that motion made, seconded, and available for consideration once public comment is complete tonight. Reference to the, reference to the other option, alternative of F7, would, would wait until the vote is taken on the first motion.
If that's the will of the council, that's fine, Mayor.
That's my sense of where the council wishes to go at the moment. And with that, we'll turn to public comment. I, I might say that the clerk has handed me a pile of cards totaling more than 80 in number. And that says to me, in light of the time that it's taken so far in this meeting to get where we are, that the council should consider some action different from our normal allocation of three minutes per speaker. And may I suggest that we allow up to two minutes for a speaker, and then redouble the urging that persons who have heard their point be made before withdraw, so that we, we might go on with the council deliberations. The motion is pending. It has some indication of interest on the part of this council, and it would allow, I think, a considerable amount of, of progress to be made from everyone's point of view. And then we'll turn to the other element of Mr. Madison's proposal tonight. Mr. Jomsky?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I would report that the city clerk's office has received 72 pieces of correspondence, which have, which have been distributed to the city council and posted on the webpage. And so that, I would, I would just mention that. And that there are three microphones that we've set up, so that when you call people, you can call multiple people, and they could take their spots at any of the three microphones, so that they don't have to make the long trek to just one microphone and wait in line. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may just clarify, with regard to the motion that's been made and seconded, does that include send, Item 2, authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Metro Board?
Yes.
And that would also, I, I would ask that we also include that a member of the city council, if you're available, great, but otherwise, that a member of the city council also be present at the Metro Board meeting. But, you know, our supervisor, Supervisor Antonovich, is the current Chair of the Board. And when is our next joint meeting with Supervisor Antonovich?
In the spring.
In the spring? So I, I would suggest that we give some thought to having a meeting with Supervisor Antonovich. And have that meeting be publicly posted as well, to give the public an opportunity to meet with him, not in his capacity as Chair of Metro, but in his capacity as the county supervisor and representative for our community.
Speaking of the scope of the motion that is pending, there is a third paragraph, which I'm confident Mr. Madison intends to be part of the motion that is pending. It relates to direction to staff to evaluate the other 710 alternatives and return to the council with further recommendation as information becomes available.
That's fine, Mayor. I didn't see that as essential to the motion. On this issue, staff would not do that at their peril, but if, if we need to make it part of the, the motion, that's fine.
Very good. Let us start with the public, public comment. We welcome it. It's very important. We recognize. And let's get started with Dr. Richard Schneider. Did I say that there's a two-minute guideline?
There is.
Right. The next speaker would be John Schaefer, and the next person after that would be Monica Schaefer. Dr. Schneider?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Richard Schneider. I am a council member in the City of South Pasadena. And I, and I'm speaking for the city at this moment. As all of you are aware, the City of South Pasadena has fought this 710 freeway for decades. And we have passed a number of resolutions. The first one was in 1947, and the most recent one is in 2011, and I've brought a copy for you to have, put in your, in your files. There are a lot of whereas's in the resolution. It indicates the history and the reasons that we oppose the 710 freeway. And many of these reasons are applicable to your city as well as ours. And the long and the short of it is, we oppose the extension of this freeway by any means, whether it is surface route, cut and cover, trench, or deep bore tunnel. And the most important thing to take out of that is that we have never tried to push this freeway into anybody else's community. We do not want it running through our community. We do not want it running through your community. We do not want it running through anybody's We have felt that this is a bad idea from every perspective, from the environmental perspective, from the public health perspective, from the historical preservation perspective, and of course, from the financial perspective. But before all that, you have to judge it, judge it as a transportation project. And we think that it fails as a transportation project, for many of the reasons that your council members have already mentioned here. I won't repeat them, but that's exactly why we have opposed it. So it, over the years, it has been a very lonely fight for South Pasadena, but times are changing. We now have two excellent allies in the City of La Cañada Flintridge and the City of Glendale, and we hope very much that the City of South, of Pasadena will join us in our fight against the 710. Thank you.
Hello, I'm, I'm John Schaefer. I'm a member of the 710 Committee of the San Rafael Neighborhoods Association. I live on the F5 route. I live next to the H2 route, and I oppose every freeway and highway route for the 710 in every neighborhood. I remember growing up as a kid in the San Gabriel Valley. There was a commercial for an auto dealership. It said, "Where the freeways meet in Downey." I have nothing wrong with, bad to say about the City of Downey, but do we want the City of Pasadena to be remembered as the place where the freeways meet? Is that what Pasadena's all about? I have put up here a map showing all of the freeway and highway routes that affect the City of Pasadena. It's the three that are the subject of Mr. Madison's motion, all of which are terrible ideas. But there are two other routes as well, the F6 and the F7. Those are the reddish and blue lines that go through Waverly School, Maranatha School, Sequoia School, Singer Park, by Huntington Hospital, through Ronald McDonald House, through Westridge School. These are important institutions of our community, and we cannot be sacrificing them for the automobile and the truck. This is just one example of the projects they are planning for our city. Now, Metro says they had a great outreach program. Metro didn't make this drawing. I did. I stayed up all night and made this drawing and sent it to my neighbors, because all Metro did were lines on pieces of paper that meant nothing to the people. If you look at this, this isn't just a line across a piece of paper. This is a freeway running through people's homes, through a park, next to San Rafael School, next to San Rafael Library. This is wrong. This was not communicated to any of the people. The reason why no one knew was because it was never said. Everyone knows why freeways are bad. I will skip this. This was Councilman Gordo's point. Remember what happened the last time they filled a gap? This is what happened. This is what happened to the 210 freeway. Trucks went from 12,000 a day to 18,000 a day. Cars went from 200,000 to 250,000. This was a disaster for all of Pasadena, not just for Mr. Madison's neighborhood. Metro, this is what would happen with the 710 project. Look at the port. It is a direct red line up into the City of Pasadena. This will happen again, and it will be worse. In fact, it will be much worse. There is a study going on right now to expand dramatically the southern part of the 710 freeway. We cannot lose focus of that. It's pointed directly at our town, 12 lanes.
Mr. Schaefer, will you bring your statement to applause?
I will bring my statement to an end. Just to be very quick, Metro has not considered gold line improvements. Metro has not considered freight by rail. What we are asking the City of Pasadena to do tonight, and I will be quick, is to approve Mr. Madison's recommendation, to ask, to ask Metro to consider other green alternatives that are not in their study. To Metro, the city has to investigate the 710 South study now. The objection deadline is September 28. What has the city done to prepare for that deadline? It is only a month away. And we ask that the city go ahead and do what Mr. Madison has said, do what Mr. Holden has said, which is to study other ways to oppose all of these routes. Thank you.
The next speaker is Monica Schaefer. The next speaker is Ron Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you so much for affording us this opportunity this evening to discuss this issue and for these recommendations that you have made. I'm here today as the president of a brand-new neighborhood association called the San Rafael Neighborhoods Association. And we are here to stay. And we are here to preserve our neighborhood from a government agency coming in and proposing to put a freeway through and not asking or telling anyone about it. That being said, I thank you, members of the council, and I ask you to understand that this issue involves the entire City of Pasadena. This freeway, as you've heard, will congest the 210 freeway almost triple what it currently is, and if you know, after 3 o'clock p.m., it's bumper-to-bumper heading out there. Secondly, we all have friends or relatives in each one of your districts. I've made personal outreach in Hastings Ranch, where Mr. Masuda is, and he mentioned neighborhoods. Everyone, when we tell them what's being proposed in our area, they're mortified. They say it's just terrible. We support you, and we are united in Pasadena against these proposals. So let's take all of these proposals off the table. These do not belong in the City of Roses. Thirdly, this not only is a local issue, this is a national and international issue. This is the City of the Tournament of Roses. Thank you, I see the time. This, this, can you imagine, national TV, we're going to say that a freeway has come through and destroyed the City of Pasadena, California, because a governmental agency has just, some board has come forward and said, "Put it there." You would throw a dart out. It's totally unacceptable. The last thing I'll say is that the reputation of Pasadena is at stake tonight. I thank you all for your, your comments and your concern. I'm very heartened, because we are united in this. And the last thing I want to mention is, not only are we united in Pasadena, we're united with Highland Park. We are united with Carvazza. We are united with South Pasadena, Glendale, La Cañada Flintridge, and every other community that has come out against this freeway. So no F7 or any of them. Thank you very much.
One more time, I'm, I'm exploring ways in which, with everyone's high level of comfort, it might be possible to reduce the total time devoted to, to public comment, as welcome as it is. And that is, is there anyone in this audience, I hope everyone understands the motion that is pending. It's the San Rafael Neighborhood Alternatives that have been put before the community and the surface alternative from Pasadena Avenue. Does anyone, does anyone object to that emotion, that, that motion that has been made by Mr. Madison? And that gives us a further indication. Let's turn then to the next speaker, Rosa Rivas, Rivas, and Dr. Bill Sherman, and then Lorie Masigian.
Mayor, city council, thank you for giving this opportunity to the people of Highland We have to come to you because Metro has not been transparent with the community of Carvazza. Up to, last Tuesday, I was not aware that this was going on. Thank you to Mr. Schaefer. Our community found out about this project that they have in mind here. Thank you for giving us this time. I need Metro to come to my community and tell us what they are all about. They have not been transparent. They are lying to us. My community is a Latino community where we need translation, and not only the Latino community, but the Chinese community is also here. This is not acceptable, that they come to our community and say, "Oh, by the way, we are going to take Avenue 64, and we are going to take all your houses." That is not acceptable. Thank you.
Dr. Sherman?
Yes.
Please proceed.
My name is Dr. Bill Sherman. I'm a retired neurosurgeon, and I've trained at the Huntington, and I've been on the staff of the Huntington. I want to talk about the Huntington. If any of you here are unfortunate enough to have a major vehicle accident, or a heart attack, or a stroke, you're going to be taken to the Huntington. These projects are not, these projects all degrade the care that the Huntington can provide. The Huntington prides itself being able to initiate trauma care within one hour, the golden hour. They pride themselves in being able to initiate stroke and heart attack care within 90 minutes. This five-year or more construction, construction project will limit access to the hospital, and if they do build it, it will severely impact the air quality around the hospital. What I'm asking the city council for, and what I want from the EIR, EIS, is I want the Huntington to be designated as a sensitive receptor, and health impact assessment be done at the campus of the Huntington Memorial Hospital. I think when these are accomplished, we're going to find that these projects are not acceptable. I don't think that the San Gabriel Valley, that the health of the San Gabriel Valley can be put at risk by these projects. Thank you for giving your consideration. Thank you for your consideration.
I think everyone knows where I stand on the issue, but I just want to thank you all for voicing what we can't to Metro and being able to grill them in a way that we're not. And I appreciate the support. I also urge each one of you to reach out to your communities in the same manner that Ms. McAusten did. I know that my grandfather isn't able to attend these events because they run so late, and he also doesn't have email access. So if you can reach out to those people in our community who also don't have access to modern technologies, I would really appreciate that as well, and to keep the rest of our process transparent for everyone in our community. Thank you.
I have a card from Tina Gelata Miller, and then from Dave Shaw.
I want to thank the Pasadena City Council for hearing our community. We have yet to hear from our Los Angeles City Council. We have a lot of people working together from Pasadena to South Pasadena, to El Torino, to Highland Park, to Eagle Rock, to Glasso Park, Cypress Park. Listen up, politicians running for office. We have 1,100 members in two weeks on our Facebook pages and on our Twitter accounts, and we aren't stopping. We are working on campaigns to recall people, and we are working on campaigns to keep people out of office. And we're going to the MTA meetings. These are neighborhoods. Metro, we're community people. We're homo sapiens, not geological rocks. You cannot dig up people's homes because of progress and commerce and not care.
Ma'am, may I ask you to direct your comments? This is true for all speakers. Please direct your comments to the City Council, the decision-maker tonight.
Certainly. I will certainly do that. I live in a pre-World War I neighborhood. Rosa Rivas and I worked for 15 years for the HPOZ, for the Historical Preservation Overlay Zone, for Garbanza to merge with Highland Park, the largest and oldest, one of the oldest, HPOZs in Los Angeles. People that didn't understand quality of their houses, didn't understand the history, and we united our community to care, to save our communities. And that's what we're asking you to do tonight. I support your measure. I support your motion. Go for it.
Good evening. My name is Dave Shaw. I'm a retired Realtor and former director of the California Association of Realtors. I don't have to tell you what this does to property values and to disclose your law regarding sale of any home in any of these neighborhoods that are affected. I appreciate where Mr. Holden was coming from in terms of getting these certain alternatives off the books. If they are not off the books after this fall, I feel that everyone in this room should be petitioning the county to have their taxes reduced, because our values will have fallen that much. It's only fair. If one arm is going to take from us, then why shouldn't we get our taxes reduced? Because that's the reality we'll be facing. Thank you.
The next speaker is June Satsky, June Satsky, and then Chris Smith. Following Mr. Smith, Raymond Kwan.
Thank you, Mayor Bogart and City Council. Speak louder. I've always been told I have a soft voice. I live in San Rafael, Pasadena, and in the past few weeks, I've been very, very frustrated and angered and discontented. I cannot believe that this study has gone through, and the people who are actually living on the route not contacted whatsoever. I know that when I went to the Wednesday meeting, they said 95 people for Pasadena. How large is our city that there's only 95 people for the CLC? That was insane to me. I was totally shocked. I'm going to skip through some of my items on my speech, because I tried to write down my notes, but I know...
My timer indicates that you have 20 seconds.
Oh, 20 seconds? Oh, my goodness. Okay. As long as this alternative, as Metro is allowed to potentially pursue this option, our property value will keep declining. We cannot sell our property for three-plus years as Metro does their study. Oh, time has expired. May I just finish one little statement here? Do not allow Metro to potentially waste our tax dollars for scoping and researching the 710 extension alternative. Last week, Metro consultants mentioned 37 million for EIR and 1 million on the consulting fee. The consulting fee did not reach out to the community. 1 million wasted.
Ma'am, your time is up. Chris Smith, and then Dr. Raymond Kwan.
My name is Chris Smith. I'm president of Highland Park Neighborhood Council. We'd like to thank you for what seems like it's going to be an overwhelming support of eliminating these routes. One of the things that we just recently, I beg your pardon. I'd like to thank the council for what seems like it's going to be an overwhelming support in eliminating these routes. Charles Miller, my neighbor and friend, and I drove up Avenue 64 this week, measuring out what a freeway would be on Avenue 64. We met a number of people just by introducing the fact that their house is in the way of a freeway, there's a tunnel that's going to come out of their house. A lot of people didn't know that. The world, I think LA's oldest house is sitting on Avenue 64 that will be destroyed as part of this. But the street's only 50 feet wide, and it's 132 feet for the freeway to go up Avenue 64, plus two more access roads. And there are a number of houses that are in that way. But we'd like to thank your support.
Dr. Kwan, and then Miriam Nakamura.
I'll leave the complaining to others. I'm giving you my wish list. My wish list is you do more than just write a letter. You know, on their website, there's 1,400 letters from politicians larger than you are, and it's just going to be on the top of a tall, tall pile. You've got to do more than that. And what I urge you to do is follow South Pasadena's lead. Their leadership protected us, protected them, for decades, and we expect you to do the same. They must have a crack legal team to have the FA, have the freeway, highway, Federal Highway Administration block this thing and take away the funding. We want that level of commitment from you. We cannot talk to a board member, board leader, Antonovich, but you can. We expect you to appeal to them on our behalf. We expect you to go above them. Go to the California Department of Transportation if you need to. We would further, my wish list also includes, we have special needs in San Rafael that make a tunnel and a freeway unattractive that my wife will get to. I expect you to hire your own consultants. The Metro is hiring their consultants to say it can be done. We want you to hire consultants that say it can't be done. We've got Caltrans, we've got Lucy Jones. We just get Lucy Jones on this to prove to them that it cannot be done. We would like a website to update the public on what you're doing, so we can watch you and make sure that there's progress and not just a letter of complaining. I urge the people here, since I have your attention, that we want, we encourage you to go to the Metro Board Meeting to stress our views, but we should show up as well. I say we should protest, do a demonstration, because if you don't take to the streets, they will take your streets.
Good evening. You know, Pasadena's well-known for being a green city. In your general plan, there's a safety element that addresses what the city will do for geologic, fire, or flood hazard. The placement of any proposed plans for the San Rafael area is not safe for these reasons. Number one, there's underground water. The historic San Rafael Creek system that feeds into Johnson's Lake and the other creek systems make it have a lot of underground water there. Two, any neighbor will tell you that there is groundwater and that the water table is high in that area. In previous years, Pasadena has had problems with contamination to our well system. I don't want the proposed 710 interchange to contaminate or dry up our groundwater supply. Recently, four earthquake faults were found under San Rafael Elementary. Almost all of the San Rafael area is in a liquefaction zone. I have a map here that shows that the majority of that area is in a liquefaction zone. I don't want Metro to build any superstructure in a liquefaction zone. They have no business doing that. If we get to the next stage, you cannot trust or believe the EIR that Caltrans will produce. The city of Pasadena needs their own EIR. Because of the groundwater in that area, Caltrans thinks that they will be building a tunnel in Pasadena. But in reality, they will end up building a tunnel system instead.
Richard Satsky, if you please, Richard Satsky, and then Jenna Kachur, Jenna Kachur, and then Eric Slimko.
Mayor Bogart, City Council, and fellow residents, I'll give you the brief version. Caltrans, Metro's assertion that the completion of the 710 will alleviate traffic, improve pollution, et cetera. Really? There was an article in yesterday's Pasadena Sun newspaper regarding the impact report that was done examining the effect of 13 NFL games at the Rose Bowl for a five-year period. It stated that would have dramatic effects related to traffic, noise, and pollution, pollution that would exceed the South Coast air quality management thresholds. For argument's sake, if you assume 12 hours per game day, that's 156 hours per year. Now let's imagine the volume of diesel tractor trailers seven days a week throughout the day. Routing tractor trailers through the San Rafael area will only increase the particulate matter and toxic gases in Pasadena and the San Gabriel Valley. As I've seen with other California capital projects, studies, projections, evaluations have always painted a rosy picture to get the public behind it, only to find out that the assumptions used were not based on sound conservative but overly optimistic or outdated data. There's an old saying, "Tell me what conclusions you want, and I'll give you a statistic to back it up." The only guaranteed statistic from these proposals would be to destroy a community. I beg you, vote against all the proposals and unite the communities.
Jenna Kachur, Jenna is the next speaker, and then Eric Slimko.
Thank you. My name is Jenna Kachur, and I'm the Preservation Director for Pasadena Heritage. Here today to share with you that, as the city's local historic preservation organization, Pasadena Heritage has been consistent since its founding in 1977 in opposing any proposed 710 freeway extension that would have detrimental impacts on historic buildings and districts in the city of Pasadena. Of the 12 alternatives that are currently under consideration in the study, five are of particular concern for Pasadena Heritage due to their potential for drastic negative effects on historic resources in Pasadena. Three of these are included in your staff report. Two are not. Those are F6 and F7, and I urge you to turn your attention to those two alternatives, as each of these would have the potential to demolish or damage numerous historic landmarks and districts. I know that the staff report indicates that the council is limited in expressing their formal opposition to these two alternatives by Measure A, but I would ask that you please give consideration to Mr. Madison's second motion, even discuss the possibility of increasing it to include F6. If you find that you're unable to make a formal opposition, then at the very least, please express to Caltrans and to Metro your strong concern that alternatives F6 and F7 will have serious negative effects on the city of Pasadena, and demand that these impacts be fully analyzed in the draft EIR, draft EIS. Because it does seem unavoidable, sorry, is my time up?
Not quite, but I thought you...
I just want to say that it seems unavoidable that the alternatives H6, H2, F5, F6, and F7 will all have significant negative impacts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Slimko, and then Ann Marie Villacanna.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I'll be brief. Keep Pasadena unique, keep Pasadena historic, keep Pasadena green, and most importantly, keep Pasadena whole. Vote resoundingly yes for Mr. Madison's proposal and his appendix, and do whatever else is required to make sure none of these freeways ever divide our city.
Ann Marie Villacanna. Robin Salzer. Then Bruce Nolte. Then Charles Miller. Mr. Salzer?
I'll keep this brief, and thank you for, the City Council, for saving my home, and saving the homes, hopefully, if this resolution goes through, of all my friends and neighbors on Avenue 64, in Highland Park and in Garbanza too. I mean, I appreciate that. Steve, you had mentioned earlier about a reference to a Paul Newman movie. And while you were saying it, I was thinking of a movie myself, and it was the movie Network. Have any of you ever seen the movie Network? It's a 1976 movie, an Academy Award-winning movie starring Faye Dunaway and Peter Finch. And the most, one of the most iconic, memorable lines ever written for a movie came from that movie, and it was, "I'm as angry as hell, and I'm not going to take it anymore." And it's a phenomenal movie, but I'm not that angry anymore if this resolution goes through. It made me think of another movie, and that's the movie Rudy. And Rudy was a movie about an undersized football player at the University of Notre Dame who never quit. And I want to thank everybody in this audience for never quitting. I mean, you fought the fight, you fought the fight, the City Council has listened. I hope you continue fighting, and at the end of the night, at the end of the evening, I hope that the City Council, my friends, Chris, Margaret, Gene, Jackie, people I consider personal friends of mine, vote for the rejection of the 710 freeway anywhere in Pasadena.
Speaking of the passage of time this evening, we still have in front of me some 60 cards, and that means an estimated completion of public comment would be midnight, absent any dramatic shift in the level of interest in speaking. Let's go to Bruce Nolte, then to Charles Miller, and then to Gretchen Knudsen.
Mr. Mayor and council, I would wonder, has Metro given us any evidence from these open houses that there's been a receptive community around that's been receptive to these proposals in any community? I doubt it. You know, I think there's money burning a hole in somebody's pocket, and they want to find a way to spend it. And one more movie quote, "Tora, tora, tora, I fear that we've awoken a sleeping giant filled with terrible resolve."
Sir?
My name is Charles Miller, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. One of the things that I wanted to comment on was that the Metro outreach has been pathetic. And an example of that is their Twitter feed for the SR 710 study. We launched a Twitter handle that in seven days, we already have 2/3 of their followers. And if you look at 1/3 of their followers, it's mostly contractors and others that are transit agencies, so I don't really count that as public outreach. The other thing I would like to mention, and we have a great Facebook following on no 710 freeway extension, if anyone wants to check it out, with a lot of resources there, is that when you put this freeway through, you won't be the city of roses anymore. You will be the city of roads. And in Highland Park, when they put through the 110 freeway, it's taken 70 years to recover that community, and it's on its way back. And I will not accept another highway, freeway, or other type of approach, other than finding another economical and environmental-balanced way to do this. But this is all about the Panama Canal, which has widened and deepened and is supposed to open in 2015. And this is all about port owners and the people that handle freight trying to run it through, right through our community. My final point is, all this, you know, traffic study of three times the volume and all the rest, pure BS, because there's an article that was in the Los Angeles Times that said that the ports are standing to lose 25% of their business because of the Panama Canal. So that means 25% less trucks. And so if they're saying that there's going to be more traffic here, it's probably going to be less. So this is all boondoggle, spending all our money. Thank you.
Turn to Gretchen Knudsen, and then Anna Pohlczek.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Knudsen tonight. I'm a resident of Highland Park, but I love Pasadena. It's why I made an investment in Highland Park. I love the area, as I do think that most of us, we love the whole area. And I just wanted to point out... And I just wanted to point out that I don't believe that Metro has actually chosen the best 12 options from the 42. And in fact, I took their SR, EIR, EIS draft results of initial evaluation that was released in March, and they, on four pages, summarize an analysis of all 42 options, rating them with a circle system. There was no numbers applied, there was no, this was, there was no quantitative analysis, and the information is buried. So in less than an hour, I took their analysis, I applied numbers to their circle system, I ranked the options for the H and F alternatives. And what I found is they did not pick the best ones. There's been no public outreach, there's been no transparency, we've had little to zero opportunity to weigh in on how they selected from the 42, which apparently they had even more options before that, to 12. And now we're rushing into the fall with no information. They're going to give the public a little bit of a time to weigh in before Metro then decides how to narrow even further. I would strongly encourage you to not only adopt the resolution, but to go ahead and really put, ask Metro, we need a robust public process. Thank you.
Linnell Graham. Gloria Morrison. Thank you. Paula Shatzke. Glenn Rothner. Thank you. Trish Gossett.
Good evening. I have never been to a council meeting until July 30th, when I spoke at the council meeting and told you all that I would either lose my home entirely or have the misfortune of being left behind the wall, unable to sell my house and unable to move and probably die of lung cancer for living there. I want to say how thrilling it has been to meet all of you, to be involved in this, and to see that people can really make a difference. When people are left out of the process, they get angry and paranoid, and then they are motivated to action. Pasadena is a world-class city. If this goes through, it will be an ugly mess. Let's not let that happen to our beautiful city. When I was five years old in New York City, I watched the Rose Parade every New Year's morning. I never dreamed I would ever live here. I don't want to die here, if you know what I mean. Thank you.
Trish Gossett.
I'm Trish Gossett, and I'm conceding my time to Charles Fisher to bump him up a little bit on the list, if that's okay.
Is his card here?
No, I didn't get a chance to turn it.
I'm sorry, sir. We have 60 cards in front of us.
But she's cheating her time to me.
I understand, but we're not going to start negotiating and trading system and speaking opportunities.
Thank you.
Ms. Gossett, if you have a statement, please go ahead.
I would like to have a statement, sir. I want to thank, I want to thank the board, first of all, for your wisdom, and I, as a citizen of Highland Park, I would love to ask you to include a letter opposing all freeways and all, in support of all neighbors and neighborhoods. You know, just because, this came up on our radar screen not long ago, this whole alternatives at putting a target on our back. And I can now honestly say, many of the people in this room really feel the pain of the people that have had this hanging over their head for years. We live in the second-largest city in the country. We need to show the rest of the world how we manage these transportation problems. And impacting and upsetting lives and spilling more diesel into our communities is not 21st century, it's old school. So I would ask you to consider a letter opposing all freeways and more transportation for human beings to, you know, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We turn now to Mitzi Nielsen and Reiner Nielsen, if you please.
This is Ryan Nielsen. Reiner Nielsen, Mitzi Nielsen passes.
Speak louder, Mr.
I'm going to just show a little slideshow of the beautiful areas of San Rafael that several of the alternatives go through with a roadway that is 180 feet wide, six lanes, two-lane access road that is as wide from that wall to the opening here, going through these neighborhoods if people have not been through those. And I'd just like the Metro people to understand what you're doing. Just silence until these slides end, please.
Gloria Castro Trejo. Dale Peterson. Next is Bill Urban after Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, City Council. Abbreviated speech. Thomas Jefferson is to have said, "A government big enough to give you everything you need is a government big enough to take away everything you have." So thank you in advance for helping be our advocate.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
Good evening. My name is Bill Urban. I'm president of the West Pasadena Residents Association, and I'm here on behalf of that association. First, I would like to commend the many neighborhood organizations who have brought this issue to the fore. This includes the Church Street Neighborhood Organization, Lake U, Court, Annandale Terrace, Neighborhood United, San Rafael Neighborhood Association, Linda Vista Annandale Association, and many others. Other speakers are describing the devastation that would be inflicted on Pasadena by Metro and Caltrans routing alternatives. WPRA shares their outrage and vehemently opposes these outrageous routings. However, I will focus on the process, or rather, lack of process in this whole enterprise. Metro has instituted a process for transparency and community involvement that sounds great, but the way that implementing the process makes it clear the last thing they want is transparency and community involvement. Some examples. How can a multi-billion dollar agency brag about its outreach and getting 95 people from Pasadena to one meeting over several months, when a handful of neighborhood groups with no paid staff get 300 people to participate in several meetings in a couple of weeks? How can a multi-billion dollar agency explain their plans on gorgeous charts, though devoid of detail, if people leave scratching their heads, when a handful of neighborhood groups can dig into publicly available information, explain the same plans, leave people understanding the plans, and purple with rage?
30 seconds.
Why is, oh dear, why is a well-established group like WPRA compelled to encourage mass emails to over 30 Metro and Caltrans officials and attempt to get someone to respond, and failing? So far, our residents have sent over 9,000 individual letters and messages to Metro and Caltrans officials. I don't know of a single response. You, Pasadena City Council members, must help us get through to Metro. People in these communities just landed a complex and sophisticated vehicle on Mars. We will not tolerate being treated like dummies.
I have a card here from Daniel Garcia. Mr. Garcia. From Dr. Kevin Naromir. Then David Hutchinson. And then Nathan Smith.
Good evening. I know it's a long evening. I think I have some pertinent information for the council. Kevin Naromir, behavioral scientist, Naromir Institute. I took an airplane to New Zealand when I was a kid, and we got fumigated by the authorities when we landed the airplane. We couldn't get off the plane because they didn't want bugs. Anyone here has ever had their house worked on and fumigated? This is what's going to happen to Pasadena if we allow these diesel trucks to come in here. I'd like to just show you a couple of slides real quick. American Lung Association. Today's government air standards, quality standards, do not reflect what science proved long ago to be levels that actually protect human health. State of the Air Report, 2012. Lower levels of ozone in particulate pose bigger risks than previously thought. A Canadian study showed that particle pollution levels well below those considered safe in the US cause premature death. So when they do those reports telling you it's safe, let's think twice about that. Especially vulnerable to the effects of roadway pollution are infants, children, women in their 50s, older adults, diabetics, obese, and those with lung disease. That's a lot of people in Pasadena who are going to get fumigated with these particulates from these diesel trucks. Breathing in pollution will increase the risk of infant death, heart attacks, strokes, lung disease, emergency room visits, and early death. Thank you. And this is not me talking. These are the folks down this tiny little school called USC, Keck School of Medicine, UCLA, the Particulate Working Group, Yale University, National Institutes of Health. The word's out. A review of 177 studies found that particulate pollution increased the risk of heart attack deaths. So, thank you. I'll skip all the USC stuff.
Sir, your time is up.
Maybe someone will come from USC. And let's find a better way to do this, folks. Thank you so much.
David Hutchinson. Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you. I'm Dave Hutchinson.
Nathan Smith. I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
I want to thank the mayor and the council for providing this public forum and for doing the best that you can, I think, in trying to facilitate everyone. First, I'd like to make a comment to Caltrans' Michelle Smith, and I think it's Lauren Bloomberg, that the stakeholders in this particular case extends beyond the few communities here. That essentially, everyone in Los Angeles County, Riverside County, San Bernardino County, all commuters are affected by this. This is not just a local issue, okay? And I agree with the council, H2, H6, and F5 should be cut. Also, F2 is equally preposterous and should be cut out, leaving F6 or F7. The most important thing of all, no build is not an option. We need this freeway, we need this desperately. We need more commuter space and freeways, and F6 or F7, or the original one, would be fine. And I know you don't like that, but you need to extend the stakeholder to a wider community. That it's not just these people, it's people from all over that need to go through this freeway. And, you know, for a few ethnocentric people, that just doesn't make sense. The basis of need is that we're near gridlock.
Ladies and gentlemen, please allow the speaker to make his point.
The basis of need is that we have a major metropolitan area that's near gridlock, and we need to increase the channel capacity. And I'm sure Metro knows what I'm talking about.
10 seconds, sir.
Thank you.
Nathan Smith. Mary Ann Parada is there?
Tough crowd. Hey, listen. What are we going to do? It's getting late, I'll be brief. I don't do this stuff. I met you guys, and I remember your faces from three weeks ago, and I couldn't be more heartened by the precision, the specificity, the intelligence. It's such, it's an honor to meet you. You guys are amazing. I feel heartened and proud. And I spoke then about my son. I had pictures because I wanted the MTA folks to see it, but I'm sad to say I don't think it would matter. But my point would have been that "lines on a map," I think was a quote from tonight, and I wanted to just show my son as more than a line on a map. But, so thank you. Just thank, I feel heard, and I really think that's cool, and, you know, I'm just Joe Guy who lives in Pasadena, and I really appreciate you listening. One point with Mr. Madison's proposal, I've got a copy of it here, there's just one word that I think is, needs to be looked at. First paragraph, whereas the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Metro, in conjunction with the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, currently, is currently, I'm not sure about that, studying options and alternatives for the completion of the 710 freeway. I think it would be more specific to say the extension of the 710 freeway. Completion presupposes that it's not already complete. So I think, before you pass that measure, maybe change that word to extension. And again, I know time's short. Thank you so much. I really feel heard, and that's pretty neat. Thanks.
We turn now to Mary Ann Parada.
I'm from South Pasadena. Everybody should close your eyes and picture the 210 freeway going east at Lake Avenue at 3:30 any day. Now just picture 200,000 additional trucks and cars a day. That's every 24 hours. Going in and out of two tunnels at the base of our beloved Huntington Hospital. Picture diesel trucks spewing 2.5 ultrafine particles, particulates, which are carcinogenic, cancer-causing pollution along the route. Whether you live in East Pasadena along the 210, or West Pasadena along the 210 and the 134, or North Pasadena along the North 210, you who would be breathing this pollution, no neighborhood in Pasadena, or in South Pasadena, will be exempt from the pollution and the congestion, as Mr. Gordo pointed out when the 210 was completed to the 215. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jerry Beal is the next speaker. I have a card. And then Harvey Slater.
Mayor Bogard, council members, my name is Jerry Beal and I live in San Rafael. First, I commend city staff for the reasoned recommendation they have brought forward. Second, I commend the city attorney for concluding at least, at last, what many of us see on the very face of Measure A. Third, I thank each council member for his and her insightful and cogent comments and questions, and I strongly urge council not only to adopt the staff recommendation tonight, but to do everything in its power to bury this misguided project moving forward. That being said, I believe Mr. Madison is correct that adoption of staff's recommendation does not go far enough, and I fully support his two motions. With regard to the concerns Mr. Holden articulated about Measure A, why not put a new advisory measure before voters? In the nearly 11 years since Measure A, the attitudes of many Pasadena residents have no doubt changed, not only in reaction to Metro's harebrained schemes to destroy our own neighborhoods, but also because so many of us have concluded that the mid-20th century practice of building more highways and freeways does little to solve 21st century transportation problems. Presenting the issue to voters also gives the citizens of Pasadena an opportunity to, in effect, apologize to our South Pasadena neighbors for throwing them to the Caltrans and Metro wolves on the question of even building a freeway 11 years ago. And final point, Metro and their consultants, their consultant, Consensus Inc., claim both online and in subsequent meetings to have sent adequate notice to public meetings, to, among other places, local churches and libraries. I have spoken to the librarian at San Rafael Branch Library and have had an email exchange with my pastor... my pastor, Dr. Smotny.
Ten seconds.
Pasadena Presbyterian Church. Neither one of them have any record or recollection of ever receiving such notices. I truly wonder if any notices were sent. Thank you.
Terry Krubsak. Thank you. Nancy Young Blute. Thank you. Nina Chomsky.
Good evening. I'm Nina Chomsky, president of the Linda Vista, excuse me, Anadale Association, and I'm here to express our, thank you, yeah, it was too high. I'm here to join with the San Rafael Neighborhoods Association with their points of view and their opposition. We have deferred to them, and we have also deferred to the WPRA to express the opinions of the West Pasadena Neighborhood Associations, because we're busy preparing to save our entire neighborhood from the next attack, which is the NFL and the Rose Bowl. And I'm heartened by the recognition of the value of neighborhoods, because we have felt for years and years and years that we have been alone, literally, in this position. That is our official position. Now I want to move to several individual comments. I think it's very clear that under SEQA, these alternatives are illegal, and not just impractical, but also have SEQA legal problems. The alternatives that before us tonight that are being discussed are not reasonable, they're not feasible, they're not realistic, and they would increase significant environmental impacts rather than reduce or avoid significant environmental impacts. To put forward alternatives under SEQA in these conditions is just not going to fly. It's legally dead on arrival. And I think probably under NEPA, that is true also, although I don't know that. I think in your letter to, thank you, to Metro, that you need to make very clear that you're going to take a legal position under SEQA and a legal position under NEPA, that these alternatives are not going to be accepted as a matter of law, not just a matter of politics, although that is extremely important also. My last little comment for a few seconds is, would somebody identify who represents Pasadena on the soak?
Bill Woods, Bill Woods. Thank you. Stan Swantek. Peter Bedford. I see Melona O'Neill.
Deborah O'Neill.
Deborah O'Neill.
That's me.
Welcome.
I actually, my name is Deborah O'Neill, and I live in West Pasadena. I was not going to say anything because, obviously, we all agree on no 710. But there's a couple of things. I noticed that Metro, and I'm sorry they're getting beaten up, but they talk about contacting us. I know that when LA County Tax Collector wants me, they know where I live. Why can't they just get the names and addresses, just send residence, send postcards? I also encourage everyone to look at the original Measure A. Look at the, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but look at Ms. Bagneres's impartial analysis, which reflects no fiscal impact to the city of Pasadena. What has been on the internet is only the, a reduction of the actual measure. You need to read the measure. You need to read what was actually passed by the citizens of Pasadena. It's ridiculous. Only 15,000 people voted in the actual election, and you need to look at it and read it, because it's not available on the internet now, but I believe the city clerk said it will be available tomorrow. But I hope he also, the city clerk, will have everything that was on the ballot in March of 2001. Not just the measure, but also the opinion of the city attorney and the, and the arguments for and against, that everything will be on the internet. Okay? Because when you read it, it's entirely different than what you may be thinking. You have to read the whole thing, all the pages. Thank you.
This card is from Shirley Curry. And then I have another card from Charles Miller, but I think a different Charles Miller.
Good evening. I'll be brief. You all look very, very tired. I'm very glad that you got a chance to see this runaround. This is what we've all been going through, and it's important for you to see it, because you're dealing with people and citizens. And that goes for Michelle, for Warren, and for Linda, all three of which should be fired along with everybody else. I used to be that consultant in a suit. I worked for the RTD, that was the precursor to the MTA, that is doing all of this nonsense to everybody. I worked for the AQMD. I went after those dollars. There isn't any part of this that is about people. It is about a process. And I think the sickest and saddest thing in the world is to hear Michelle say her favorite slide is the project development process and post-scoping initial study area. I mean, really, can we get back to English, speaking to people? I've lived in five neighborhoods throughout my 56 years. Nobody talks this way. And I'm sure she doesn't talk to her son, her daughter, her husband, or neither does Warren, or neither does Linda, who should be fired if that's communication. And before my time is up, I would encourage all of you that when we ask you a question that is a yes or no, I don't want a maybe. I want a yes, a no, or an I don't know. That's sufficient for me, because I speak English as a first-generation Mexican-American, as well as the rest of these people, who are all ethnocentric, whoever that was. All right? And I appreciate you being very direct and specific. Again, I know you're tired, but I really would appreciate if you would speak to us in English and use that as your nightmare. And now we have a name.
Ten seconds.
I don't know who asked for a name for all of these consultant groups. I worked like this. They don't want you to know their names. Let's get some. And by the way, I'm a registered voter, and I vote.
The next speaker is Charles Miller, and then Tim Lambert, and then Gary Ching, Fred Gehring. Thank you. John Cavaman. Okay, thank you. And then after Mr. Cavaman, Ron Flores.
Mayor, council members, I've lived in the Markham Place Historic District for 39 years.
It's important that your voice.
My name is John Cavaman. I've lived in the Markham Place Historic District in West Pasadena for 39 years, since 1973. And I see there are a lot of new faces to the fight that we've been fighting all of this time. I do believe that this is about the movement of goods, that it's a direct route out to the 40 and the 15, or up to the Central Valley, and it's all about moving trucks. And I also think that the pollution is going to be devastating for our neighborhood, for the hospitals, the schools, and the parks. I hope that as these different alternatives are peeled away by Metro, that all of the community stays together and continues to fight the alternatives that are left until there are no alternatives in Pasadena. And I think Councilman Holden, you mentioned that everyone knows that the surface freeway along the Meridian Route is dead. I would urge the council to get Caltrans to sell their properties in that corridor.
Thank you. Is Mr. Flores going to step forward? Ron Flores? I have a card from Sheila Ramsher, Ramsesser. Nothing similar to that. Joan Dooley, that's an easy one. Joan Dooley. I have Lovish, Lovish Van Lee, Van Leece. Must be Louise. Diane Patritzi. Lorna Moore.
Hi. I own property in Pasadena on Grace Hill, near South Pasadena, and we would have been next to the surface route. And I've been fighting the freeway since 1990. And I just find this whole process confusing, because they're not starting with a purpose and need statement. And I've studied the original EIR for the 710 freeway, and it's all about the purpose and need. And that purpose and need was, this was going to be a bypass for the central downtown business district in LA. They wanted cars and trucks to come up around through our cities and relieve traffic through the central business district. That's what this was about, because they weren't going to spend $1.2 billion to take traffic off of Orange Grove. And, but that's what they would tell the local residents. And so that's how Pasadena sort of got to think this was a good idea until we tried to start educating people. But I think of all these alternatives, I would urge you to vote for the no build, because it looks like there's a lot of money for the San Gabriel Valley for a lot of probably good projects. I mean, assuming they're not widening and taking homes. You know, there's not a lot of detail there, but to spend $11.8 billion, I think is the latest estimate for the tunnel version, is a lot of money for a little four-and-a-half-mile section stuck way over here when we've got this gigantic gap between, you know, the two freeway and the 605 that's got no improvements at all. So it makes just a lot more sense to spread that money all across that area, and probably a lot less of it, and do a lot more good. And I would really urge you to vote against the F7 route, too, because we've been living with this specter of the freeway in our neighborhood for decades, and it's time to relieve us of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Frank?
Okay.
You don't look like Frank.
No, I'm Diane Patritzi.
Welcome.
Did you call me?
I did. I did.
Okay. I want to, I think it's a wonderful thing, what you're doing. You're on the right track. This is a historic moment. You're all unified, making a very intense statement, a very influential statement, if not a ruling authority. I understand it's not, but it is a strong, influential, and very smart statement. But there is something that you do have under your control and your authority, and you can make a ruling decision on, and that's Haamanga up above Devil's Gate Dam, and all of those animals, and all of those trees and willows, and the flood control, the natural flood control that's going on up there. All of that, you can make that decision.
Does this relate to the freeway?
Well, it relates to nature.
We're devoting a number of hours tonight to the freeway.
I understand. I'm through. I just want you to not forget that you have the power to make decisions of Haamanga and stop the development in Haamanga. No soccer fields in Haamanga.
Thank you. Let's turn to Frank Fraley. Frank Fraley. Pamela, Pamela Toth, or Tota?
She's up.
Please step forward, ma'am. Tricia Churchill would be next.
Thank you for having us tonight. I really, really appreciate it. My name is Pam Toth, and I live in Eagle Rock. I started out in Highland Park. From 1956 on, I've been in Eagle Rock, but I own property, commercial property, on Avenue 64. And out of everything I've heard here today, it's all about houses. And I agree, houses are very, very important, and so is commercial property. I only found out about these plans for the freeway, because I went in to visit my tenant, and he handed me a flyer and said, I guess you know about this. You must have gotten it in the mail. I said, no, what is it? What's it about? He directed me to a house on Avenue 64, where the people there had been working on letting the neighborhood know by going door-to-door. And as they went door-to-door, they gave flyers out, maps, information, and from there, each neighbor in turn started canvassing the streets, or we wouldn't have known about it at all.
Yes, she's right.
I get notices from, I'm presuming it's some department in the city of LA, whenever there is something going on in the way of construction around my property. Even if it's to drive a dump truck of dirt up the street, they notify us. I never got anything on this. I'm concerned about a street sinking with a tunnel under my property and under the streets. How about the vibration from construction and the vibration of the trucks? It's going to be like an earthquake. Are the buildings going to stand? Property values will go down. What you guys decide in Pasadena is going to affect Highland Park, Garvanza. With you guys, we have hope. Our council hasn't told us anything about a meeting. Thank you so much.
Tricia Churchill?
Yeah, I'm Tricia Churchill. I live in the San Rafael Hills, and I have a question for Councilman Holden.
Ma'am, if you'd address the council as a whole.
There was something he said that I didn't quite understand, so I needed some clarification.
We reserve the right to answer or not to answer because of the pressures of having so many people. So state your question. It'll be part of the record, and then we'll go from there.
I wasn't sure exactly what you were saying when you were talking about the alternatives to be removed. In 2001, you indicated you supported extending the 710 freeway through Pasadena when you endorsed Measure A. Do you still support extending the freeway through Pasadena? Any of the alternatives?
Chris, you know, the question should be directed at the council as a whole, but each council member's free to respond if he chooses, she chooses to do so.
What I would say is that the options that I've indicated that I don't support, including the surface route, I've tried to be very clear about that. The issue in terms of the tunnel is one that is still open for me to let this process unfold. Quite frankly, it is possible that, one, it should not have trucks as access through it. There could be continued, there could be environmental issues that, when those are brought to the fore and the last speaker, raise a number of important issues that will come out in an EIR, and that could potentially change the direction in terms of how I would view that project in terms of the F7.
So you do support possibly extending the freeway through Pasadena?
Well, right now, I'm in a, right now, I'm in a position of saying that I don't have a clear position on whether it should be extended, that there's a process that I'm prepared to support go forward, and that process will more than likely yield results that could, quite frankly, in other words, if the freeway extension were to have trucks on it, it's probably a project I wouldn't support. So there's a, there's an ongoing process for me on it.
So that's maybe.
It's a, I'm waiting to see how the process unfolds on that. All the other options, as I've said tonight, I do not support.
Okay, thank you.
We turn then to Hakeb Kotavertian. Mr. Kotavertian. Christopher Schreiner. Mr. Kotavertian, please go ahead.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to talk, but there was a suggestion here that we can reduce the gridlock by adding more highways and freeways, and I thought maybe I should talk, because I can't direct my comments to Michelle and her team, but maybe you can direct it to them. Because I think that one of the best things that they can do with our taxpayer money is maybe take two weeks off and go to London with our money, and spend some time traveling. They can go from London to Paris, from Paris to Belgium. I think what they'll find is that the transportation there is so great, that there is no traffic, there is no gridlock, and you do that without going on any highway or freeway. It's called trains and buses.
Thank you very much. Christopher Schreiner, and then Mark Williams.
Mayor, council members, thank you for letting us communicate our concerns tonight, something that the MTA people woefully failed in allowing us to do. something that the MTA people woefully failed in allowing us to do. I only found out about all these proposals from my WPA newsletter and was shocked and angered to learn that this route was going to plow through my neighborhood. I grew up in the San Rafael area. I went to San Rafael Elementary School, spent hours at San Rafael Library, got married in Church of the Angels, bought a house two blocks over from my neighbor's house, from my parents' house. It's a very special area, has many unusual topographical features, Johnson's Lake, Johnson's Creek, a lot of, a lot of canyons and hilltops with names that reflect their topography. Has many historic buildings like the Church of the Angels, San Rafael Winery. It's a very close-knit community, and I'm saddened and angered that this could be devastated. I can't think of a more incongruous route than to have this go through our neighborhood, and I just want to join with my fellow residents tonight and do whatever it takes to save my community, however long and protracted the battle may take.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tom Savio, and then Vincent Manche.
I would ask the board, the council, to vote on the broad resolution, including removal of 710 from our backyards completely. And then, if that does not win a majority vote, then vote on having some options removed from the 710 plan. This way, we here can see what is in the minds of the members of the council, who are really for the freeway and who are not for the freeway. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Savio?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Just checking the card, Mr. Vincent Manche. Cindy McIntosh Bear, welcome.
I'll be brief. I had a couple of questions for you, but I also just wanted to let you know, I don't know if you know that last month, the National Association of Realtors marched on Washington, DC on behalf of homeowners and home ownership. How vitally important that is to our economical recovery on all levels, not just across the nation, but here. We just started to see the market heat up and our investments, for the first time in years for some people, going up. Please, please, please protect the people of Pasadena. There's been so many people we've had to help try to save their homes, so many people have lost their homes, many people, this is all they have left. Their investment in their home is all they have left. If their home's taken by eminent domain, they're going to receive fair market value, but the surrounding homes plummet. You know what's going to happen. Please stand up for the people of Pasadena.
Sir, please step forward to the microphone. We welcome your comments. But state your name.
My name is Duchan Petrac. As you could see, I am from abroad, and I came from Pasadena and worked at JPL for thirty years. At that time, Pasadena had problems with integration. I'm a small family and went through that problem. And also, at that time, I found out that South Pasadena is so successful, that prohibitions were so serious, succeeded to get the law, the judges decided against the completion. So after forty years or so, now South Pasadena is supported by us. Very strange. I approved whatever you hear, how do you say it, supported, was suggested that all alternatives be abolished, I was not treated. I don't know how many more. All of them should be abolished. Who would imagine that completion of eighty mile, what, six or eight miles, 710 to 210 would be an issue? I biked on 210 when it was built. So I am a little surprised, but whatever today we discuss, we don't discuss the problems of Pasadena, that's a problem of our life. Pollution, cars, health, pollution, pollution, and so on. Thank you very much, and I think you are doing terrific job to eliminating all our, how do you say, voters. So much.
Thank you. I have a card that appears to be Susan Thierkroof, Manford Way. Sarah Gavitt.
I'll keep, hello? I'll keep it real short. I'd like to second the statement from the representative from the Pasadena Heritage Society, in particular with reference to the F6 and F7 routes, which did not get as much discussion tonight. I want to urge you to support Steve Madison's proposal to include this in your opposition. But if you are unable to express a formal opposition to F6 and F7 due to Measure A, which several of you have suggested may occur, I'd like you to, I would like to encourage you to adopt another measure expressing your strong concern that F6 and F7 will have a serious negative effect on the city of Pasadena. You could do this tonight, Measure A or not Measure A, and I encourage you to do that.
Thank you very much. We turn to Chris Taylor. John Cassani. Susan Petrac. Emmanuel Constantino. Constantino, thank you. Then we would turn to Maria Arroyo, as I read it, then Patsy Lane, then Ronnie Hiron, and Bill Bicker. Ma'am?
I feel like this is raping our neighborhood, and it's putting the last nail in the coffin of the American dream. If anyone's seen Glen Summer Road, which I don't live on, it's my aunt's street. Every single house on that street looks like a picture book, the perfect American dream street. And at Halloween, to give you an idea of what it's like, get about, my cousins both go out and get candy, and there's like about $100 worth of candy, and it always disappears before the jillion kids come down that street. I don't know how many live on the street, but I asked two or three people if they could come, and they said they had to take care of their children, and they were working tonight. And there were older people. My aunt couldn't come, she's elderly. I asked a lady down the street, she says, "I can't come, I'm too upset." I also asked a lady whose father had built the two bridge houses on Laguna Road and had once lived in the winery, and her father also built a house on Johnson's Lake. I asked her about coming, she said she's blind, her husband is too upset, and her son is too upset. And she says, "I'm losing my hair, and I just don't know why. I wonder why." She thought it was a shampoo. But anyway, this gives you an idea of what is actually going on, and if you looked at our area from the air, it's like looking at a park. It's like destroying the rainforest.
Thank you.
My name is Ronnie Hiron.
Ronnie Hiron.
Yes, I will be brief. I was going to present testimony about all this passion. It's very encouraging to see, and thank you very much, by the way, for your position on this issue. However, I have to express my nightmare scenario, and that would be for Caltrans to certify the EIR and the EIS with a statement of overriding consideration while sacrificing viable communities for the benefit of an unspecified greater good. The assumptions built into these models and alternatives fail to specify a need for the extension of the 710. What we do know for certain is that any of the alternatives presented here today will destroy viable communities for the, well, possibly, and I underscore the word possibly, reducing community times for no more than a few minutes. I believe that we are far more worth than a few minutes. Thank you.
Bill Bicker. Welcome, and then Patty Nalle.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman, for taking it this far. I just want to stress that whatever you do tonight, I don't care what it is, isn't going to kill this. You really, I want to support what the lady said. You really need to get after it. You need to get after Metro. Mr. Holden, I would love to see your next mailer I get for your campaign. You can keep it up about the railcars, but having a sign saying, "I stopped the 710", and I will vote for you and pay. But, pardon? I think this is about jobs, and it's about railcars, or it's about trucks. They need to keep the harbor going. Sometimes I don't have any idea if those numbers are believable, but they need to keep the harbors going. We ought to figure out, you ought to help figure out, how many jobs can be generated in the construction industry, which I think truly is the only force behind this, to build the railroads we need from the tailor yards east, and get those trucks off the road. If you take a look at the studies that were done on the southern end or the port end of the 710, you will find incredible health impacts for the kids, for the people, from the diesel particulate. This is not pie in the sky. This is scientific analysis of what happened to the people down there. Help stop this. I think it's vital, if you can do that, just keep it up, including after your vote. Thank you very much.
Is Patty Nalle or Nalle present tonight? That completes the public comment that has been requested. I have a request from my colleague Jackie Robinson to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm prepared to support Councilmember Madison's motion that's currently before us. I believe that over the past three weeks and including tonight, we've received our marching orders from all of the residents that are opposed to those three, those three alternatives as set forth by Metro. With regard to, with regard to F6 and F7, I do happen to believe that Measure A means something, and for, I think that for us to make an effort tonight to make a decision as a body on those two alternatives would be a slap in the face to the members of the community that did have the opportunity to vote on that in 2001. And a number of people, both in the last few weeks and tonight, have mentioned disenfranchisement. And I think that if we make that effort tonight, that that would indeed disenfranchise those voters, whether they voted for or against it in 2001, and they weren't able to attend tonight's meeting, that they would not have an opportunity for input, which I think is the crux of a lot of the criticism of Metro tonight. And so I would ask that if we do, are going to make an effort to make, take a position as a city again, that everybody be included in that decision, and that we place a new ballot measure to oppose F6 or F7, or take more specific language at the remaining alternatives outside of the three that we're going to make a position on tonight. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Just to remind, we have a motion pending that pertains to the staff recommendation as presented that would request that the alternatives H2, H6, and F5 be removed from further consideration at Metro in regard to this 710 alternatives analysis that is underway. That's the motion that has been made and seconded. Further comments? Mayor, if I could.
Please, move of the exact motion, extension or completion.
The phrasing substantially as is put forth on the, on the screen, and then we'll complement that in a second. Steve?
I was going to point out that I thought the comment was very well taken, that it should say "extension" instead of "completion." And also, there is an extra, thank you for that. There is an extra currently in the first paragraph of the resolution that I drafted, I guess my other question would be to the city attorney, whether it would be helpful, and I recognize we're on those three alternatives that don't seem controversial at all, but whether we should include a whereas about Measure A and its non-applicability to these That's just really a yes or no.
Sorry. Okay, sorry about that. You can certainly include a recital to that effect. I think the language that's in the agenda report would be the support for any resolution that's adopted, and that does indicate that those three alternatives would not be precluded in terms of the city's opposition. So you can do it either way, but I don't think it's required because we would incorporate the agenda report.
Yeah, we can leave it out then. I think the record is clear.
I want to correct myself in that part of the action that is being taken is a resolution that Mr. Madison has formulated before the meeting and is presented to us tonight. In substance, it is as set forth on the, on the screen, but perhaps the city clerk should read this resolution and read the result, the motion as he understands it, and including all of these works.
And Mayor, if I could just, I see one other thing that the clerk will probably see on his own, but in paragraph three, where it talks about four alternatives, that probably should now be based on the current motion, limited to three, and the reference to F7 in that paragraph should also be deleted.
So I'll read the motion, then I will read the entirety of the resolution?
I, sorry. I will read, I've been reminding the council all night. I will read the motion, and then I will read in entirety the resolution as it should read based on that motion, okay? Approve staff recommendation and to adopt the resolution distributed by Councilmember Madison, amended by opposing the three alternatives recommended by staff. And the resolution would read, whereas the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transit Authority, Transportation Authority, Metro in perennas, in conjunction with the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans in perennas, is currently studying options and alternatives for the extension of the 710 freeway. And whereas Metro/Caltrans are preparing an environmental impact report slash environmental impact statement, EIR/ EIS in perennas, and the study is currently in the alternative analysis stage with, which, I should say, which involves updating the analysis stage with which, I should say, which involves updating the purpose and need for the project, refining the study area, and development of an alternative screening document. And whereas at least three of the alternatives being considered by Metro/Caltrans will involve the construction of freeways or highways within the city of Pasadena in perens, alternatives F5, F-5, H-2, and H-6, close perens, which would have detrimental impacts on the city of Pasadena, its residents, historic residential neighborhoods, schools, businesses, families, and children, from significant traffic, noise, air quality, and other environmental issues, and would threaten homes, businesses, medical facilities, parks, schools, and other cultural, historical, and environmental resources, period. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Pasadena as follows. It is the position of the city of Pasadena that Metro/Caltrans should immediately remove from any further consideration whatsoever, including but not limited to any discussion, analysis, or consideration, or inclusion in any EIR/ EIS, the following alternatives. Alternative F hyphen five, tunnel connecting, in perens, tunnel connecting I-10 to SR-134, close perens. Alternative H2, arterial, in perens, arterial, arterial road along Avenue 64, close perens. And alternative H hyphen six, in perens, highway along Huntington Drive slash Fair Oaks slash Pasadena Avenue, close perens, semicolon.
That's the motion that's pending.
Mayor, I'd like to call the question, must there be any other questions or comments?
Are there any objections to the motion? Now, there's been comment tonight, first from Mr. Madison and then from others, about the role of F7, the tunnel alternative. I think the council has made it clear, it's not prepared to take action on that, in part because of the presence of Measure A and the history of Pasadena's consideration of this issue. The question is whether there are any further comments or requests from members of the council for additional study of that matter in the weeks ahead, so that we might know more about our options in regard to F7 in the future than we do tonight.
Mayor, if I could, part of our, of the motion that we just adopted, excuse me, part of the motion that we just adopted did ask staff, direct staff, to study the other alternatives carefully and keep us apprised, and perhaps we could just direct staff to give us extra attention and input on that. And I think also there are legal issues that we might want to discuss in closed session with the city attorney. I know there are legal avenues that we could pursue. If, if some of the council's reluctance is with regard to the legal applicability of Measure A, or whether it provides a legal constraint, then there are legal remedies that we could discuss, pursuing. I'm not endorsing that at this point, but.
Mayor?
Jackie?
City clerk, with regard to the March elections, what would be the deadline should the, should the council decide to move forward with a new ballot measure to, for it to be included on that same ballot?
The 88th day before the election, one second, I'm just pulling up the calendar, is the first week in December, so it's December 7th is the 88th day. The city, last city council meeting to consider placing a measure on the ballot for that issue would be December 3rd.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Excuse me?
Question?
Madam McAusten?
Thank you. I'd like to get further information about the city, the city attorney's suggestion in the staff report. I mean, I understand she's going to take, do further study on the limitations or restrictions of Measure A, but can you give us specific information about this possibility of filing a declaratory relief action to seek court review and determination of the applicability of Measure A to the tunnel route?
Yes, there is a possibility of seeking a judicial action, pursuing a judicial action in which the city would seek declaratory relief from a court, giving further clarification of its interpretation of the measure in the context of whatever facts we put forth.
So if, if we were successful in getting declaratory relief that Measure A did not apply to the tunnel, then we would be free to take an action with regard to the tunnel. But if, if we were not successful, we could still take it to a vote of the people.
You can certainly still take it to a vote of the people.
So we could do both.
Yes, you could do both. One's not exclusive to the other.
And when you come back with the further study, could we get, or maybe Fred, maybe you can help us, when the further study is done on these measures, could you give some clarification to the question of whether or not the original freeway plan excluded trucks? And that when the decisions were made about support or not support of that plan, whether trucks were expected to be traveling on that freeway? Because I know that the question of truck traffic is huge right now, and as Councilmember Madison pointed out, and, and Gordo, it's been a huge issue since the extension of the 210 opened. So I think it's, it's very meaningful as to whether or not, you know, this is all about trucks, which it seems like it is. So can you find out if originally there was some exclusion for trucks?
We're coming close to the end of our discussion of the special item on tonight's agenda, the 710 extension alternatives. The council does have some additional business as set forth on the agenda, but I don't want to rush beyond the subject that we're currently completing. That completes then the discussion of the, I'm sorry.
I would just mention to those, those members of the audience that are still here, that if you did not get your tickets validated, the staff in the back have validating machines, please make sure to validate your ticket, otherwise you're going to be paying for parking and, I wanted to make sure you had that reminder. Thank you.
That's all right. May I call the attention of the council to the consent calendar tonight and to ask if there is any request from a member of the council to withhold any of these items from a sweep motion that might be offered momentarily? Move approval. Second. It's been moved by Mr. Holden and seconded by Ms. Robinson, that the consent calendar be approved. There being no objections, the consent calendar is approved. And we turn then to item 12 on the agenda, which is to approve a purchase order issued under emergency purchase provisions to authorize an increase of $62,000 for a total amount not to exceed $293,000 for repairs of the Broadway Unit 3 primary boiler feed pump at PWP.
Mayor, we have a written report on that. I'd move approval. Move staff recommendation.
A motion was made by Mr. Madison and seconded by Mr. Gordo. I hope that record is complete and correct. And are there any questions about item 12 on the agenda? There being none, it is approved. And we have second reading of an ordinance that was introduced by Mr. Holden. It is an ordinance of the city authorizing the issuance by the city of not to exceed $15 million of principal amount Pasadena Electric Revenue Refunding Bonds 2012A series, payable out of the light and power fund, and approving the execution and delivery of a seventh supplement to electric revenue bond fiscal agent agreement, escrow agreements, and a continuing disclosure agreement in connection therewith. For second reading, we ask the city clerk to conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gordo?
Yes.
Councilmember Holden?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Tornick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McAusten?
Yes.
Mayor Bogard?
Yes.
The motion is approved without opposition.
We have completed all of the business on the agenda tonight. Are there any questions or requests from members of the council regarding future city business?
Mayor, could I just, it's not future business, but I just wanted to thank the staff tonight. They really did yeoman-like work, yeowoman-like work across the board, public safety personnel, the city clerk, notwithstanding the glitch, which I understand is a vendor's issue anyway, and all of the staff were terrific.
Yeah, I would just join in, in thanking the staff for organizing, and along with you, Mayor, this is, these type of meetings are very difficult to administer, and you did a very good job, and so I just wanted to.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.